I'll call to order the work session, the Wilsonville City Council of November 3rd, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I'll start by asking council members for review of the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Seeing none, are there any council concerns before we begin our pre-council work session? Okay. Turning to now to our work session, we'll first go to the city manager recruitment process.
Thank you for your time tonight. The consultant from GMP Consultants is not yet online. We did tell him 5:10, so just FYI. I think he will get on a little bit earlier than that. But we did have an opportunity to send to you the draft recruitment profile. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at that over the weekend. There are some edits that we've already identified that we need to make, that I think the consultant will talk to you a little bit about as well. But I think tonight what he will be looking for is any comments that you have on the on the profile, anything that you'd like to add, anything that you'd like to see changed, and then also maybe some guidance as far as drafting, in essence, a timeline for the recruitment and also kind of the steps that you're looking.
Okay, and I see Mr. Myers is present now.
You might be on mute, Richard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You ready to go?
We're ready to go. Sorry, I've prepped them. They're they're ready for you, Richard.
Okay. I was expecting 5:10. Okay. Wonderful. You have before you the works, the draft of the proposal, and let me share my screen with that. So you have that to look at as well and not as much looking at me. And we've in putting this together, I interviewed the entire council, and thank you so much, Mayor and councilors, for the time you you gave in allowing, asking the questions, and we went over time on several of you, I think on all of you, and it was a pleasure visiting with you and getting the information and pulling that together. Twelve other community members were also interviewed, so we pulled, kind of used their information to help give us some other nuances and maybe some other thoughts or ideas there. And as well as, we pulled the budget message, the 2025 annual report, kind of skimmed through the previous annual report, and the council goals from '25 and '27. I read your wonderful Boone's Ferry messengers, several of those. Those are really cool. So, you know, kudos to the the city and for you for that's those are really wonderful documents. The Chamber's website, the city's website, and a few other documents and stuff that I can't remember. But we pulled those together and created this. Staff has provided some of the photos and materials there for us in this, and I wanted to go through a couple of points in the the document that I wanted to point out. In the, you'll notice that we have here some of these buttons, and there's one of the buttons right there, are links that will go to other documents. This one would go to the job description that we need to also work on. So we have one that's approved and with your letterhead and everything on it so that it's identified that way. And then at the very end of the document, we have, you'll notice, for the first review down here, there's just some Xs. Depending on when this document is officially approved by you as the council, we'll probably put that at four or five weeks out. If we can get it approved next week in a special short meeting, then that would be wonderful. We can get it launched right away and then start the clock on the the process there. And depending on that approval date, you know, when it's approved, we'd look at the calendar, and this is the the green calendar schedule that we had before. So we'd have that first review, probably if it launches, not on the second, because that's yesterday, but if it launches next week sometime, probably December, that week of December 14th, December 15th is Monday, that week, we would do the the first review. Basically, the first review, what we we call the first review is the application deadline. We don't make it a hard, fast deadline, because sometimes when we're doing the interviews, we'll get a couple of late applications, and we'll look at them and say, why, why did you get this late? And maybe we don't look at them at all. You know, we look at them briefly and say, no, none of these are anything to pull in for sure. But we'd like to be able to have that option to be able to pull in some other applications that may just come in late because they've been thinking about it and thinking about it, and then they finally decided after the fact of the review date. But so that first review date would be probably somewhere on the 15th. If we can get it to 15, then the rest of the schedule basically stays pretty consistent with us looking at January 5th as that week start preparing for what we call a work session. That would be, it's actually an executive session, but what we do is that's where we bring you all of the information. We say, we had 72 applications come in, we interviewed 10 of them, 12 of them met qualifications, we interviewed 12 of them. Here are the top six, and we'll sit down and discuss those, and we'll provide all of that background information on those top ones and on the others that were interviewed, and even the ones that weren't interviewed. Well, we can talk about all of those, and if you want to pull others into the top or take somebody out of the top listing, that's the point where we'd ask that, you know, in that executive session, it's, we're not issuing a decision, but we say, does this look like a good, good challet of candidates, or do we want to mix it up a little bit and change it? And then we would go from there.
Mr. Myers, sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, because I'm worried you'll get too far off from a question that, about something that you raised earlier. Excuse me, my voice is going for tonight. You mentioned you reached out to community members, and I don't need you, I didn't see anything, the packet as to who they are. I'm assuming these were people identified in your meetings with the councilors. Is that correct?
Correct. And we also had some staff.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Continue.
And I, and I've actually got a couple other community members, one that just emailed me and said, hey, I missed the time, I'm still going to meet with them, and just to make sure that there's something that maybe we need to cover in in this, or maybe they'll have some information or insights for questions as we get into the interview process, because that's always a good piece as well. Great question. Thank you, Mayor. Then we have the final interview preparation time, and we would then prepare the background searches on the candidates that you want to interview. We do the references, and so this takes probably two to three weeks to get this information. So we send out the information to the references that they list and provide, and then get that information back, so that when you sit down to do the final interviews, you, not the other panel, if you have another panel, but just you as the decision makers, will have this additional information, which will be the background information and their references, and the the results from the reference checks. If anything shows up in the background, we will then provide other information on that. We do a Google search background on the the semifinalists so that we can have some information there as well. You know, we, we have our meetings in the morning with all the consultants for GMP, and, you know, one of the consultants was talking about a position he's working on, and this one candidate looked really great on paper, but there was a little flag that just came up that, hey, you know, he's had, he's been let go at four different cities before. And so he started digging into that in Google and gave him some really good questions to ask in the screening interview about those, and the candidate didn't do a very good job of sharing the information there that needed to be shared, and so they, he got moved out of being one of the candidates. And so we tried to screen some of those out as well before and and get that background so we don't have that that kind of surprise. But you never know, we may still see a surprise. So that's, and then that would mean that somewhere around that week of the 22nd, you know, after the 22nd of January, probably that week of the 25th of January, we'd actually be scheduling the final interview time and having a day or two of of interviews of those final candidates. And then from there, the council would have the opportunity to make a, make a decision when, if they get excited and there's somebody there that they really want, then they can make a decision to move forward, and and we can try to get that spread away and and decided before early in February. So that's the the interview process and some of those details associated with this profile. It's, it's completely, and and we do have some corrections already that we kind of knew would would possibly pop up, because some of these, we get information off of webpages, and some webpages are not current. They have little details. We learned that Mentor Graphics has been purchased and is no longer in place there, so that one's been, we'll remove that. And your parks have grown, so we'll put that in with 19 parks and nearly 300 acres. That they put in, we researched and found that there was a manager that left after 19 years of service or would be leaving and retiring, and that's, that's Arlene. So, so it's the wrong one, and so he's, Brian's 14, so we'll correct that. However, it's going to be something that's going to be something to note for people, that, yeah, your previous city manager was there 19, your current one's retiring after 14. That's a really good record. That's something that shows what kind of community Wilsonville is. So we may work that in, or we may let them find that themselves. We found that assistant city manager was left out of the direct reports, we'll put that in. And we also, note was made to us about the four Cs, customer service, collaboration, commitment, and competence, and that referring to the Wilsonville Way and describing it more that way and giving more description. I really weighed whether to put that in, because I like to leave some little details like that out so that we can ask them in interviews, and if they don't know anything of how that ties together, they didn't do their research. And personally, I think they, if they don't do their research, that's not a good sign, that they're just applying because it's there. We want somebody who's doing their research and really understands some of those things. So that's one that I would probably say, let's leave out the reference to the Wilsonville Way, but use that in the interview process and see if they make those connections and understand what that is. But that's, that's for you to decide, this is your profile, and so it's, it's here. I don't expect you to have a lot of comments tonight. In fact, I'd be surprised, I wouldn't be, because your council does read and packets and everything regularly. But I would be willing to take those tonight, but we will need to come back in a regular meeting and and make the formal adoption, and we'll make those corrections and have this available for you for that meeting, whether you'd want to do that next week or at your next council meeting. If you go to the next council meeting, that just pushes us back a little bit and gets us closer to the December two-week break where there's really no way to get a hold of people and people aren't available and and stuff like that. But we can hop over that and continue on and still be close to being done by the end of February, by the end of January or early February.
Any thoughts, council?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I, I would vote that we move more quickly than slowly to move the process along. If that means that maybe we can do a virtual meeting next week rather than call everyone together, however that can be pulled together, but if that's what we need to do, I, I would lean toward that, but certainly interested in other feedback as well.
Council President Barry.
Yes, I agree. Thank you for the report. I thought that was really thorough, and I would like to keep the process moving along too. So if we have to have a short special meeting, I'm all for that.
Council Cunningham.
I'll just say ditto. Let's keep this thing moving and get it done quicker.
Mr. Skoll, impending being sworn in.
I'll remember. Who's the interview teams?
I believe that's something that you will speak with, Richard, to determine who the interview teams will be.
Anyone from the staff?
That's up for for your discussion as well. All of it's part of discussion for council.
Okay. And I agree with all that this, the faster and sooner the better.
Yeah.
It, from my perspective, Mr. Myers, thank you. Thank you for everybody's presentation. I agree it should be moved ahead, but it would be helpful if we need special meetings that the sooner we know, collectively, we're given a heads up. I mean, there was some email earlier about maybe a special council meeting, I would think it was this week, that we're trying to schedule alternate days, but the more time you give us, the better. That would be helpful. And I'm really interested in having a list, and maybe we don't want to make it public. I don't have to defer to staff on this, but I'd like to have a list of the committee members that provided input to get a sense of, if we see there might have been someone omitted, that we might be wanting you to go out and ask them.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And along that line, what I found with the ones that I started, as I started doing the later interviews, there wasn't anything new. People were saying the same things and bringing up the same points. So I think as we get bigger and more people involved, we'll probably see some more. But there were some key people that just couldn't make the interviews work.
But, Mr. Myers, it's important to me to know who's on that list, because if it's warranted, another attempt to reach out to them, then I think as a council body, we might ask. I think it's very important. We have some people vested in this community that I'd like to make sure that they were given the opportunity, and also, if we can, allow them to be heard. But thank you for your thoughts, but I'd appreciate if we can know who those people are.
Yeah. And Mayor, council, to Mr. Skoll's comment and question, and also to the mayor on scheduling the the special meeting. What I would suggest is, in order to keep things moving along, that if you have any corrections that you see tonight, if councilors either want to email those to me, or we can talk about them tonight, we can mark those down and and do that, or, and have a deadline to say, yeah, if you want to send them to me by Thursday or Friday this week, then Thursday would be better, and then maybe Monday, we'd have something that we could present, and we could have that special meeting scheduled ahead of time for Tuesday or Monday if we went to Wednesday. We could get that scheduled out now for you so that you have the dates and times of when you need it, and we can try to keep everybody on track and say, if we don't get any comments by such and such date, then we're going to go with the ones we do have and present that, and there can be then discussion at the council meeting and maybe some other edits as we go through and have that final document for approval.
Is it possible to circulate the, you've already said that there were changes that were made. It would save time for at least this member of council if I saw the most updated version so I don't spend time looking at things that already have been corrected. Is that possible?
Right. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
And we can get, we can get that actually, that probably tomorrow, and we can probably get something off to staff and they can get that out to you.
Okay, thank you.
And if, when you send that, Richard, if you could also send the list of the community members that you were able to touch base with, and then that way I'll send that along as well with the revised draft.
Yeah, and we've got some on the list that we're still trying to reach out, so we'll continue to try to reach to them as well. And Mayor and council, Mr. Skoll also asked about the the future panels and the makeup of those. That is still something that the council needs to decide what that will be. One of those panels, I hope you believe and have set in your minds is set, that's you as the council, that that you're going to have your panel and we'll conduct your interviews as as the council. Having another panel, yeah, that's one that's up to to you to to make those decisions on that, and and that's something we can look at as we get closer to that work session, count the executive session date, that as we have the candidates there, we can start saying, okay, who do we want on this panel? And I'd recommend that it not be more than, more than six or seven, just for the size of it, but a good makeup and mix is is what you'd want to look at for that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Skoll.
I'm a little late to the process here, so pardon me if I'm behind or getting ahead. Will there be a standard deck of questions that'll be generated by you that'll be given to those panels, or is that something that the council or staff will have to generate? Or are we independent to ask the questions that we want?
Mayor, councilor, and, since your counsel, Skoll, congratulations, by the way. Yes, we will provide some questions if you'd like. We encourage some ideas and possible questions from the council, even from staff, or even from some of the public. In fact, I got some questions from some of the community members that, you know, they said, yeah, here's a possible question that I'd like, that'd be great to ask. So we've got some of those, but we can do that, and we like to make sure that we do have prepared questions. We encourage clarifying answers to those questions, but just to make sure that we stay consistent in what questions are being asked of the candidates, and we avoid those questions that are not questions that you're supposed to ask in employment interviews. We try to have a prepared list of questions, but it is, it's completely up to the council how you want to create that. We do have a pretty good library of sample questions that have been asked, and and we pull those in if you need them, or if there's other questions that you want to ask, that's, that's great as well, and we can add those in. Some councils have done, have their staff prepare the questions, but we typically do prepare those for you and and have that as part of the packet for the interview process.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Myers. Okay, next up, sewer and storm utility rate update.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neal and council. My name is Zach Weigl. I'm the Wilsonville City Engineer. With me tonight are Tagi Aker and Zach Hazel with FCS Group. They're financial consultants, working on updating the city's sewer and stormwater utility fee. Tonight, Tagi and Zach are going to provide an update on the cost of service and the rate design for both the storm and the sewer utility fee, and that's, their work is based on the feedback that council provided back in our last meeting in April, so some time ago. As Tagi and Zach are going through the presentation, there's a couple of things for you to consider to think about that we're going to be asking your feedback tonight on. One of the, one of the items is, FCS Group has provided three scenarios for your consideration on updating the sewer utility rate, so we'll want to get your feedback on which one of those to pursue and to bring back as part of the final rate package, what we're planning for in December. I know this has been discussed at previous council meetings, but we just want to confirm that you want to move forward with an annual utility rate inflation adjustment. I know that's been talked about because, to help avoid some of those big jumps in the utility rates in the future. And then one thing we wanted to get your feedback on is the storm utility rate exemptions. Right now, there's 122, 122 accounts in the city that are exempt from the stormwater fee. We're recommending that the, that that exemption not continue as part of the utility fee update. Some of the reasons why is that the stormwater fee applies across the city generally. Some of the items, including our implementation of our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, municipal separate stormwater system permit, also known as MPDS MS4 permit, that applies across the city, and a big part of the program is implementing that, that permit program. Also, we, the Stormwater Fund also does stream restoration and wetland restoration projects that has benefit to everyone across the city, and then also the Stormwater Fund manages roadway and public facility runoff. So some of the reasons to consider not having that exemption. Finally, we'd just like to get some, any feedback you have on the utility rate and implementation schedule when we bring that back for final adoption. I know, as I mentioned, we haven't been before you with this topic since April, so I just wanted to quickly cover, you know, why are we updating the rates now, and why are the rate increases maybe higher than you might be expecting under normal circumstances? And just as a reminder, the city updated the wastewater treatment master plan and the stormwater master plan. Those were approved by council in early 2024. With those master plans come a 20-year updated plan for staffing and infrastructure needs to keep our level of service consistent with how we're operating today. Some of the things that, you know, basically, there's, those are the needs to make sure that the water that's entering our streams and and rivers is clean, that we're not, we're making sure that sewage isn't backing up into homes and businesses, that our neighborhoods are, you know, free from flooding, and our streams aren't being, having erosion that Then another reason we're updating the utility rates now is the rates have been pretty flat. The sewer utility rate hasn't been updated since 2014, and the storm utility rate hasn't been updated since 2021. So there's no annual inflation adjustment at this time, so those rates have been consistent since that time. So quite a lot of loss of value in that, in that revenue. And then lastly, as you can see in the chart that's on the screen, we had to deal with quite a substantial increase in construction inflation between 2020 and 2023. You can see that FHWA reported a 23-point, or 53.8% increase in construction costs. So all those three things coming together all at once are really having us take a hard look at our storm and sanitary sewer utility fees. With that, I'll turn it over to Zach and Tagi to walk through the cost of service analysis.
Thank you, Zach. So tonight's agenda will mostly be related to what we call a cost of service analysis. Zach mentioned back in April, we came to council, presented revenue requirement results for the sewer utility and the stormwater utility. We'll provide a brief review of what those results were before we get into the cost of service analysis, but before we get into it, just wanted to, you know, review a couple of terms that we'll be using throughout the presentation. You know, the term revenue requirement essentially is a financial plan. We look at each of the utilities individually and look at what revenue would be needed. We look at each of the utilities individually and look at what revenue would be needed to cover known operating costs, existing and planned debt service, and other capital funding costs. So that was the focus of that April presentation. Tonight, we'll be talking about the cost of service analysis. Essentially, how do we allocate the costs of the utility to different customer classes based on their demand characteristics? So if the revenue requirement is how big does the pie need to be, the cost of service analysis looks at how do we slice that up to ensure equitable cost recovery for those different types of customers. On the next slide, we have an overview of the general rate study, revenue requirement, that earlier meeting. We also reviewed and brought forward updated sewer and stormwater system development charges, or SDCs. That was at a June council meeting, and then we had stakeholder meetings in August and September. So all of that is essentially complete, and then we, today, we'll be moving into that cost of service rate design in terms of how do we recover the planned revenues for each of the utilities. So first up, stormwater utility. We'll be looking at each of the utilities, their existing rate structure, the proposed rate adjustments, and what that might look like for some sample bills. And then we'll get into Zach's portion of the presentation where we figure out our classes paying their fair share for the sewer utility. So stormwater typically would be a flat charge for residential on a monthly basis. They pay $11.90. Other types of development, multifamily, non-residential, their charges are variable based on measured impervious area. So if you have a commercial parcel, say about 8,300 impervious square feet, that's about three times the typical impervious footprint of a single-family parcel, so they pay about three times that $11.90 you see on the screen there. So the results of the revenue requirement are shown in this graphic here. The lines represent revenue, the solid line, revenue at today's rates. The dashed line would be what the revenue would be with those percent rate adjustments noted above the dashed line. So for the first three years, for the stormwater utility revenue requirement, you see a 35.5% increase each year for '26, '27, and '28, followed by 5% increases after that. So revenues are shown in the lines, and that's overlaid with the financial obligations now and projected into the future for each of the utilities. So that solid portion of the stacked column that's blue at the bottom, those are your current and forecasted operating costs. Above that is a smaller slice of green, that's existing debt service owed on outstanding debt. And then above that, in the orange and yellow, that's how you pay for your capital projects, some new borrowing, and also a set aside from annual rate revenues to cash fund a portion of the capital program. Notably, in 2026 through 2029, that four-year period, there's about $55 million of capital projects. And so that's one of the key drivers for why revenues need to increase, is to cover the additional debt service, as well as pay for a portion of that capital program with rate revenue, with cash, so that you're not over-reliant on debt service. So in terms of what that would mean for a typical single-family customer, and an example non-residential customer, that first row there, typical single-family customer pays $11.90, flat rate today on a monthly basis. 35.5% increase would bump that to just over $16 in 2026, just under $22 per month in 2027, and then just under $30 per month by 2028. That non-residential sample bill there, about 8,300 impervious square feet, it's about three times the typical impervious footprint of a single-family customer, so their bill is about three times the single-family rate. So they'd be more in the $36 per month range today, and those same percentage adjustments would apply to their rates as well. Moving on to the sewer utility, again, looking at the existing rate structure, sewer utility rates are comprised of a fixed base fee, which applies on a per-account basis for residential, for non-residential, increasing charge based on larger meter sizes, and then on top of that is a flow-based additional unit charge. So there's two units of consumption included in the base charge. Anything above that is $8.85 per unit. So that's a way that customers with more flow pay a larger bill through the additional sewer unit charge. The forecast for the sewer utility is similar to the stormwater utility in that current revenues can pay for today's obligations, you can cover your operating costs, you can pay for the debt service that you have today, and there's a little bit left over to pay for some rate-funded capital projects. Similar to stormwater, though, there are some significant capital projects on the horizon that need to be paid for. And so that ramp-up period of four years of 27.5% increases allows revenues to scale up in order to pay for, the big one there, 2029 is a significant amount of borrowing. So want to make sure that you're planning ahead to have rates set in place to pay for the planned debt principal and interest costs on a loan. So over the next six years, there's about $177 million of capital projects, and a big chunk of that would need to come from borrowing. So that ramp-up plan is about as low as we could go with the capital projects that we know of. And then after that, 3.5% increase per year, starting in 2030, to help keep up with estimated cost inflation. So typical single-family customer that uses 500 cubic feet, they pay about $46 per month today. That would increase to about $59, starting next year with that 27.5% increase. You can see that charge would increase each year, be about $96 a month by 2028, and then about $123 in 2029. So that covers the revenue requirement results that we went into in more detail in April. That's just a summary. And then the cost of service analysis, which Zach will talk to, will be new content for you.
All right. Thank you, Tagi, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be back. As Tagi was describing, the revenue requirement is all about how big the pie is, and now we're going to get into dividing the pie up into its constituent classes. So if you want to go to the next slide here, on the left-hand side, you can see the existing revenue collection by class in the city for the sewer system. So as you can see, residential, those residential customers make up about 68% of the existing revenues, non-residential 25, and high-strength customers 7%. Based on the cost of service analysis that we performed, it looks like residential could actually justify going down. They actually have a smaller share of the pie at 62%. Non-residential could go up a little bit to 30%, and high-strength could also go up a little bit by 1%. So another way to put that is to talk about each class in terms of its cost recovery as a percentage of its cost of service. So for example, in residential's case, they are right now, we are right now collecting revenues at 110% of the cost to serve residential, so we're overcharging them about 10%, according to the cost of service analysis. Now, there's a lot of assumptions going into these analyses, and so we typically, you know, recommend a range of around 5% north or south of that 100% cost of service target. And even with that range, it looks like residential is overpaying. And then you can see in the same graphic that non-residential is at 83% of its cost of service, and high-strength is at 86% of its cost of service. So a one-time correction to cost of service, like if you were to do, if you were to get everybody to paying their fair share right away, this upcoming rate increase, it would be pretty dramatic for some classes. And so we typically, you know, phase in these results as we can over a period of, in this case, five years. And you can see, so reading this table from top to bottom, the first, the first line there is the overall revenue increase that Tagi mentioned, that's that revenue requirement, 27.5% for the next four years. And then you can see the revenue increases by class. So because, as I mentioned, residential is overpaying right now, they would actually receive a slight decrease in the overall rate increase, not at huge comfort, because it's still north of 25%, but they would get a slightly less rating, slightly lower rate increase than the other two classes. So non-residential and high-strength, because they are currently underpaying, they would need to, they would need to pay a slightly higher rate increase at 32% over these, over these first four years. If you were to follow this plan, based on our revenue projections, this next slide shows you about where they would land after this five-year phase-in period. So residential would still be slightly overpaying, again, with all of the assumptions that we've made going into this analysis, but every, all three classes would be within that plus or minus 5% of their cost of service. So that's the cost of service analysis. The next step then is to decide how do we actually want to charge the cost of service results in the sewer utility? So just a quick assumption, we are making these rate increases on January 1 of each fiscal year, that's what's been built into these examples I'm about to show you. Scenario one is the across-the-board scenario. That's where we just raise rates and we ignore the cost of service analysis. We just go with the 27.5% for all customer classes, and that would maintain your existing rate structure. Scenario two, we're going to use the cost of service analysis phase-in I just showed you, so that'd be 25-ish% for residential and 32% for non-residential, high-strength. And the goal there would be to improve the class equity over those five years. And then scenario three is much like scenario two, but we've added in this extra feature that we've been talking about with city staff. Basically, the idea here is that there would not be a 2CCF allowance like there currently is with the existing rate structure. Instead, everybody would pay a base rate, and then they would pay for their volume rate. They wouldn't get a 2CCF for free. So that would increase the revenue stability of the overall sewer rate, free revenue, but it does have the side effect of also raising the bills for the small, low-flow users, which we'll see in this next slide, which gives you some sample bills. So the way, the way to read this slide is to basically recognize that the colors are the different scenarios. So green, not really a scenario, that's just your existing rates. Orange is with the across-the-board increases. Yellow is with the COSA, the cost of service analysis, and then blue is that scenario three, so that's the cost of service analysis without the allowance. And then the different groupings are different kinds of customers. So starting on the far left with the residential 2CCF user, this is a really low-flow user. They get that 2CCF included in their allowance right now. So you can see that they are pretty indifferent between the scenarios one and two, that's the across-the-board and COSA scenarios, but they do see a significant increase going into the scenario three, and that's because we're removing the 2CCF allowance, and so they would, their bills would go up quite substantially in scenario three. Now, the next customer, the 5CCF customer, they are also pretty indifferent between scenarios one and two, and they also see a bigger increase for scenario three. However, you can see that trend flips when you get to the high-flow customers, for example, residential at 14CCF. So they would pay the highest rate under a pure across-the-board rate increase. The COSA increase would benefit them, but then they also see significant benefit from removing the 2CCF allowance. That's because these customers were paying a larger share of their bills as the volume rate, and when you remove the CCF allowance, the volume rate necessarily goes down. And so they actually get a benefit from removing the allowance. And then on the far right here, you can see the, the commercial examples that we picked out. The basic story here is that they are, they benefit under the across-the-board scenario where they have a lower increase, and they are hit a little bit harder with a COSA increase. And then the same kind of trends apply when we're talking about removing the allowance. So those low CCF users are going to get hit harder, and the high CCF users are going to hit less. And then for some people who prefer the numbers, this is the exact same information presented in table format, so you can easily compare for all of these example customers where they're benefiting and where they're not benefiting. We also have provided here a sample bill for a high-strength customer. This was a real bill at some point in the last fiscal year, and we're showing you how they would be charged under the different examples. So you can see, of course, that when we don't account for the need for larger rate increases at their current rate, that's $23,000. When we include the 27.5 overall, 27.5% overall increases, that goes up to $29,000. And then when we add in that extra bit for the cost of service analysis adjustments, that goes up to over $30,000. And that's the end of my prepared material. Hand it back over to Zach to finish out the presentation.
So I thought it would be helpful to show this in the context of the overall utility bill, bill that everyone gets every month. So if you look at that fourth line where it's the annual increase, you're looking at what the, the annual increase with the sewer and storm under scenario two, the COSA scenario, what that annual, or that monthly increase would be for the overall bill. So you can see in that, that first year, it's $9, that sewer and storm combined, $12 in the second year, 15 in the third, and then, you know, tapering off as we get back to the normal, regular cost of inflationary cost. So, you know, we presented the sewer and storm as, you know, you see the 25%, the 35%. What does that really mean to your overall bill? If you look at that last line, overall bill, we're talking about 12% increase, up to 16, and then in that fourth year, starting to taper back off to inflationary adjustments. So I just, I go over a few of the next steps. We are, based on feedback from council tonight, will, we have some virtual open houses, and then reaching out to the top 10 sewer users in the, in the city to get feedback, and then we're proposing to come back on the, the meeting on December 15th to adopt the final rate increases and implementation schedule. Just as a reminder, this is the feedback we're looking for from you tonight. So with that, happy to answer any questions and look forward to your comments.
Counselor Chevlin.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, gentlemen. Couple of questions. I think I understood you to say you've already been collecting stakeholder feedback as opposed to public feedback. Is that correct?
We did some stakeholder outreach as part of the SDC analysis. We have the, the website that's been updated with current information. We have received some comments, but we haven't done any direct engagement yet on the utility rates.
And are you able to share any of the feedback with us?
Well, we've only got one feedback, and there was concern about
Sure.
the, the increases, of course.
As I think we all have, it's a big jump, which we appreciate. My second question is, in regards to eliminating the utility rate exemption, but do you anticipate any hardship on those 100 and some odd situations?
Yeah, I think if you go, if we go back to the, the storm fee, these, they are all single-family, or they're all residential properties that have the exemption right now. So if you go back to what the utility bill is on this slide, it's $11.90 per month. So we will do notification in advance to let them know that that exemption is ending before that goes into, into place, if that's what council decides.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Skol.
What's the difference? I understand residential, but what's the difference between residential, non-residential, and high-strength as it relates to residential and commercial?
Sorry? Yeah, so if I'm understanding your question, that commercial customers would be under the non-residential class.
Right. And then, and then they include the high-strength, which I would assume would be high-volume users?
So there's a couple of high-strength, there's, I think there's two high-strength customers that get an entirely separate bill that the city staff develops.
Yeah, so as part of the treatment plant process, they have a, a high BOD and TSS. Those are components that need additional treatment at the treatment plant. So they have to have a separate permit through the city to accept those higher loads.
But these are, these are industrial users, not residential.
Yeah, they're industrial users, for sure. Yeah.
Was that your question? Were you trying to distinguish between the two residential ones?
You get residential, and I would assume the middle's like a commercial operation, and then you have industrial,
Right.
which would be a high-flow.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, the highest, the high strength.
It's the strength of the stuff they're sending us as well that factors into it.
Yeah. But like Zach said, there's two high-strength customers in the city currently.
And the last question, can we go back to one of the charts there, let's say scenario two? Did you have the payment curves on?
The one with the curves?
Yeah. And I'm not really, you know, I'm not really up on how these projects are financed backward. Just as an example. So you carried this from 2025 to 2034. Is there an opportunity to push the horizon out further to basically flatten the curve a little bit and lessen the impact?
Yeah, we definitely took a look at that. I think the challenge is that there's a lot of projects that are coming up quickly that are needed. So of course, we, you know, we would like to push this out as far as we can, but this is really what we saw as needed to be able to fund the current projects that are needed, like within the next five years. I don't know, Zach, if you...
Could you just maybe highlight two or three of those on the sewer side that are driving this?
Yeah, so we have a large portion of the pipe replacements are in the Charbonneau area for sewer and storm water. So those pipes are, reach the end of their life and need replaced. Also, the Beckman Creek Interceptor needs upgraded. That's a very high-cost project, about $20 million. And that project is partially for development of the Frog Pond area, but it also serves existing customers. So it's about a 50-50 split on how that is funded between system development charges and utility rates.
So that's an important distinction because SDCs pay for growth-related projects. So we don't want the impression to be that we need to do this to service growth because there's two factors to paying for projects. There's rates and there's SDCs. SDCs are paid by developers at the time of issuance of building permits.
And then in terms of spreading out the rate increases, the big reason we can't go too much further in that direction is that you'll notice in 2029, there is a big spike in the debt service. That's when basically the funding for the big, major projects are needed, based on our projection of how much cash we'll have at that time. And so unless the projects get delayed, there's not really much room to delay the rate increases.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Cunningham.
All right, I was going to ask about that deferred maintenance, but it sounds like that's been answered. So talking about the adoption of the annual inflation adjustment, that's on here, that looks like that starts in 2030? Is that what we're looking at there or is that just part of just this, this package?
Yeah, so in 2030, 2030 is the last year of our COSA phase-in. So I presume that after that is when the inflationary increases would take.
Right.
So the, so on that slide, for example, 2031 and on, those are estimates of what we would look at for the
Those are estimates for, yeah.
So we're looking at doing a whole bunch of capital projects here and we have taken on a whole bunch of debt and we have to pay that off. When that's all over, these rates are going to stay at these tripled levels? Or is there any thought of, you know, it seems like we've gotten way behind on this and all of a sudden we're going, uh-oh, we've got a lot of capital projects that we have not been prepared for for many years and we need to raise these rates pretty astronomically over the next few years. So when this is all over, what happens?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, I mean, you need the money to pay for the projects and the rates aren't going to go down over time.
Right.
So for the borrowing, we assumed a 20-year term on the loans. So that debt service would be there for at least 20 years. And then every so often, you know, 10 years or so, there's a comprehensive planning process. New projects may pop up. Infrastructure ages over time, right? So more maintenance might be needed. But this is just our best estimate, given the capital program we see today in terms of what's needed, but would not anticipate that rates would go down once those projects are paid off. There's always something that comes up with, you know, that graphic that Zach showed at the beginning of the construction cost increases over that three- or four-year period was like plus 50% from 2020 to 2023. So unknowns like that do pop up, for example, that is hard to anticipate that, you know, prior to 2020. So there's, you know, always a snapshot in time for these types of studies. And we do our best to forecast out, but there are some unknowns out there as well.
And I would add, like, this process is a cycle, right? In 10 years, we're going to update the master plans again. We'll look at the rates again. So there, it's, it's like Tagi's saying, it's a, it's a cycle where you continually look at what the rates are needed to be.
So I suppose that's a question for someone that'll be here long after I'm gone. All right, that's all I got. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Well, I suppose they're actually looking for input too, so.
Yeah, let me go back to that slide. And if it's helpful, we can walk through with these one at a time or...
Counselor Shevlin.
Thank you. I'm kind of jumping around a little bit, but the ones that are a little easier for me to speak to, I'll address first. The exemptions, elimination of the exemptions is of interest to me, but, you know, I'm concerned about the hardship. It'd be interesting to see what, what that really impact will be on those individual But it seems like that adjustment needs to be made. It's time that, that those particular residents are paying the same fair share that the other residents are paying. So that makes sense to me.
Maybe I can give you an example of where this is occurring, like real world. There's a lot of residents that live on the, in the Montgomery, Montgomery Road, Rose Lane area. We have a pretty substantial project to improve a culvert across Rose Lane. So those properties benefit from that project, but they don't pay into it. So that's just an example of how some of these projects benefit the city as a whole. So it makes sense for, it could make sense for everyone to pay.
Right, and that's what I believe I understood from the packet, that, that there had been appropriate exemptions for a period of time. But now it seems that everyone should, is receiving the equal amount of service, so should be paying the equal amount of responsibility, is the way I interpret it. It seemed like scenario two, and I don't have that up in front of me, as far as the differences was the most appealing to me. I don't know if you can pull that slide back up again.
Is this one the most helpful?
Yeah, but I'll have to adjust to it again, so.
So scenario two is in the yellow.
Right, right.
So you can see that the residential is a little bit lower than scenario one and the commercial is a little bit higher and that's to make up for that.
The percentage difference, yeah. So I think that's all I had so far on that, those particular feedback items.
Thank you. City Council President Barry.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Can we go back one side? Maybe two sides? The one that had the three options. So I'm kind of leaning towards option number two, scenario number two. I was wondering about the comparison between scenario number two and number three, where the COSA no allowance. And I was wondering if staff had a preference over, you know, number two over number three or reverse.
Yeah, we, so we included scenario three because we've had a lot of questions from the community about this two, the 2CCF allowance and why is that included in the base rate? So we wanted to show a scenario where that was removed. And it really has the opposite effect than you would expect. It makes the, if you're a lower water user, your bill actually goes up, then, then down. So, yeah, I think as staff, we would not recommend scenario three. It has the opposite effect that you would think and it does not, you know, does not promote conservation of water either. So it's, only benefits the highest users.
But that, that really helps, like clarification for me. I'm definitely leaning towards scenario number two. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Schult.
Just a couple of questions. I, I too prefer scenario two, but what's the net effect over time of increased interest rates and inflation? Is that cooked into this at all or is it kind of a wild card as we move forward?
Yes, we did make inflation assumptions. That's all built into the rate increases,
Right.
including in scenario two and three.
Because you're in the initial graph there where you, you know, you had the high slope there. You said there was like a 50-some percent increase in construction inflation. You know, if that hits again, do we have to go back and revisit this?
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't assume anything that dramatic, I will say, yeah.
Understand, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Cunningham.
So to answer your questions of the feedback you were looking for, I would tend towards scenario two, the COSA as well. You know, when we talked about this annual inflation adjustment, you know, we were talking about it as something that was going to be something that we would implement, that we want to be having a 25 or 35% rate increase this year, but it would be something that we would implement now so that we would have future health. So for me, it's difficult to talk about, you know, adding that onto the pile of what we're already looking at tonight as we're making such drastic rate increase takes on this. For the, the rate exemptions, I think that it would be pertinent to ensure that all of those accounts are directly notified and have that opportunity to provide feedback in the, in the coming meetings before December, so that they can come to those open houses and they're fully aware of them, that they're not just hoping that they happen to see them on the website or something
Yeah.
and that they can reach out to council and speak with us about their situations and their concerns and about how that's going to impact them. So I think directly, making sure that we have direct notifications to all those people would be, would be prudent.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. Just to clarify one thing on the, so there are inflationary adjustments built into that rate. So the, the annual inflation adjustments wouldn't start until year four for storm and year five for, for sewer. Unless it was like, we could build it to where, if it was over the 3 and 1/2% that was assumed in the model, that we could adjust it then or just hold firm until, until those...
3 and 1/2 seems a little high for CPI.
Yeah, we're, we're using construction.
It's based on the cost of materials, services
Yeah.
for construction.
Yeah, for, for construction. We also look at, so we actually use a couple of different indices. We kind of blend them together based on the city's makeup of costs to come up with inflation adjustment.
So yeah, I'd be interested to see what, what ends up, the language that comes back around that and about what that looks like and how we calculate that and put that into whatever decision we make in December.
Yeah, we can propose some language around that.
And for my input, I agree, concur with council, scenario two is the one I'm looking at. I also concur with Counselor Cunningham. I'm really concerned about the elimination of those exemptions. I want as much feedback from those people as possible, so.
Yeah, we can do direct guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, council. I'm Everett Wild, Government Relations Manager for the city, and I'm joined tonight by Greg Leo, our Government Affairs Consultant, here to present the 2026 State Legislative Agenda for your consideration. Why do we adopt a legislative agenda? City has historically done one. It helps reinforce your policies and positions as a council, indicates your priorities and interests for this upcoming legislative session. It also guides our staff response to legislation that maybe hasn't been considered or brought forward by us, but is raised by others. And how do we look at those and adapt to those during the session? So it gives us some, some boundaries and guidelines to respond to. And then, of course, it's a tool for legislators so that they can hold something in their hand and say, oh, this is what Wilsonville cares about or I remember hearing about this. Why do they care about this? In the past few years, the city has adopted two separate documents, one that was kind of a longer-term biennial agenda and then a single-year agenda. I'm proposing to do a single agenda that kind of covers both categories, the longer-term and the more immediate issues, broken down into basically three categories. And this is kind of somewhat my own take on it, but also reflects what some of our peers and other jurisdictions do. So three types of positions. My words for them are initiatives, which are the primary objectives, our city-sponsored bills, things that we are really going to try to drive home this next session. They're timely, they're reflective of the current situation. The next category is the priorities. They are similarly important, high priority things that matter to us, but maybe they'll take longer to achieve. So we want to get them on the radar for this upcoming session, but we don't expect that they'll be completed. Or maybe they're, they're being led by partners, League of Oregon Cities or, you know, another city or Metro or someone else who can kind of be the tip of the spear and take some of the pressure off of us carrying that load alone. And then principles, which are those kind of steady, rarely-changing value statements that reflect where we are as a city, where we want to go. And they also help guide that response to legislation from others. So 2026, two primary initiatives. The first is a frontage improvement conditions technical fix. There was a bill in the 2025 session that limited the ability of cities to require frontage improvements based on the type of use in the building. We had proposed language that we brought forward in the 2025 session that was not incorporated in the final bill, that basically would say, we, rather than looking at, does a new use apply to the same category as the prior use? Does the new use change the real-world impacts? A great example of this is a restaurant, could be a sit-down restaurant. It gets converted to a drive-through under this bill. We would not be able to say, well, this drive-through is going to result in tens or hundreds of more trips per day and not be able to require some traffic management in response to that new use. So we have technical language that was prepared from last session and Greg may be able to speak more to that. It just was not included and I believe the legislature would be receptive to, to that. The second initiative is the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. This is the culmination of about a half a dozen bills over the past four years relating to increasing Oregon's housing. to increasing Oregon's housing stock, moving faster in developing new housing. The challenge here is that the rules that are being developed by state agencies are not, in our opinion, reflective of the legislative intent. They're very challenging to work under. Rather than being some safe harbors and allowing some local control and flexibility, they're implementing this model code that is, in all practicality, not model. It's, it's mandatory. So we want to work with a broad coalition of partners here. LOC, other cities are certainly with us on this one, but trying to realign that with the legislative intent. When do these rules apply? How do they affect our local control and our ability to plan for growth and new residential development in our city? Our 2026 priorities, Boone Bridge Replacement Project. I'm sure you'll all be shocked that that's on there. Public Meetings Law Interpretation. This has been a, a conversation for about a year, year and a half now about, there's a bill that came forward that kind of changed some of the public meeting law rules. How the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is interpreting that bill is, is posing challenging, as, as I'm sure you're all aware. Infrastructure Financing. There is a bill the past session, HFIP Housing Infrastructure Finance Program was established, but trying to make sure that it's flexible, that it aligns with the needs of our community. And then homelessness management, kind of going back to Oregon being unique in the country now after the, the most recent Supreme Court ruling on homelessness, and seeing if we can make sure that there's flexibility for, we've got a great program, but, you know, making sure that, that we are flexible to respond to homeless management in a way that works for our city. Onto the principles. There are 18 of them. I won't read all of them off. They're, they're in the packet. Broadly, under the categories of governance, transportation and public transit, natural resources and environment, housing and community development, and economy and workforce. Hopefully, none of them are surprising to you. I believe they reflect the longstanding positions from prior legislative agendas, city council goals, our comprehensive plan, the foundational documents of our positions. So a little bit of context for the 2026 session and why these things that I'm proposing rose to the top and maybe other things didn't. This is a short session, 35 days maximum. They cannot go beyond that constitutionally. Short sessions are really envisioned for legislative fixes, technical tweaks, not big meaty new things that are going to take a long time. The rule of thumb is, in a 35-day session, if you don't have a hearing within the first week, maybe the first week and a half, your bill's not going to pass. It, it is very, very fast. Every legislator only gets two bills, three bills per committee. There are some exceptions to that for high-powered committees like the Rules Committee, but generally two bills per legislator, three per committee. We'll be coming off of the transportation-focused special session, which had a number of fireworks, took longer than expected. There's a potential for referendum of that legislation to the ballot. There were some other things that happened that I can go into if you want, but, but it was not smooth in some regards, wasn't in some, but, but it, it had challenges in other regards. So that, I think, is kind of going to be looming over the, the building. And then the big news, of course, is that when the legislature adjourned at the end of the long session, we had a $500 million surplus. And because of Oregon's high reliance on income tax and how closely we are tied to the federal income tax structure, the passage of HR1 at the federal level has changed what Oregon's income tax revenues will look like. And so they left with a $500 million surplus and will be coming in with a $300 million deficit. So it'll be a cut-budget year. There will be little appetite for legislation with new fiscal impact. We've heard no new programs is the language that they've been, been using. So it'll, it'll be a challenging, challenging session, and again, very, very quick. I covered a lot of ground pretty quickly. Greg, anything to add?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, the short session is really going to be about rebalancing the budget and fixing bills. So with our priority here on the House Bill 2668, 2658, that's, we had the Dash Six Amendments ready to go in the hands of the sponsor, and the clock ran out at the end of the session. So that one, they're expecting. We've already talked to, you know, the representative involved, and I do think that's one that we can get fixed. This is not the session to go and ask for money, you know, because, you know, the cupboard is bare, and they will be looking for ways to rebalance the budget in this time of, of less revenue. So I think this is really a great document. It's clear. You know, in the material, Everett has talked about it being a mnemonic. The fact we have this says Wilsonville has interests. They're important interests. We are consistent over time. These are not things that have changed, but rather things that this council has supported in the past and I think other councils before it. So consistency here is a virtue, and we just want to have a very strong, certain voice when the unexpected comes up and we say, we have, you know, a document which really spells out exactly what we stand for. So with, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Cunningham?
Well, I'll just say for my part, God willing, there's enough time for that referendum to get through. It's disappointing to see the governor holding on to it and holding it hostage and keeping it away from the people to redress their grievances with their government. Now, as we were just coming off of a section here about talking about our sewer and storm water rate increases, I look at that infrastructure financing, and I drool, but I also know that given the budget issues, that's probably the least likely hail mary in the world. But I think it's worthwhile pointing out, though, that so much of the state housing legislation and executive orders have created this downstream effect where we've, we've built to pretty incredible lengths, and, and our systems, our infrastructure is now being taxed for it. And that then comes out, you know, us as the local council will be blamed for these rate increases, but there's a lot of layers to, to those issues. Hopefully, they can figure out those public meeting law interpretations. That would be fantastic. It's absolutely wild. I, I had a couple, a few questions about just a few of the, the bullet points down here under the legislative principles of. So, you know, there's the one about natural environment, talks about enhancing connections to the Willamette River for economic and tourism benefits, including reopening the Willamette Falls locks and canals. I, I wasn't aware that there was much of an economic tourism hit that were, who, like, was, was there any sort of tourism coming from the river when the locks were open? Or is this?
I think it was more of discussion about Wilsonville Concrete needing to use the, the locks. So it was more of an economic development issue for them.
Okay. That makes, that makes sense.
And dinner cruises, I suppose, that could emanate from Portland and come to Wilsonville. You could throw that in there as well.
Or anglers coming upstream, or kayakers going through. There are some recreational opportunities, I think.
Gutsler, Cunningham, Mayor O'Neill, the tourism value is certainly there, and there has been discussion with tour boats, et cetera. But if you can't get through the locks, you can't, you know, access this part of the river.
Sure.
Additionally, this Willamette Water Trail, we just met last week with other cities, all of whom are looking at, you know, frontage and what the economic development opportunities are in the long term. So, but the main thing about the locks is, just as the city manager has described, you know, if there is a major, you know, seismic event and we have to move large amounts of concrete or big pieces of steel in order to rebuild bridges and that kind of, you know, restoration after an earthquake, it's going to come probably on the river. So there's a lot of benefits to getting the locks open. It's been a long and difficult journey. We were a little disappointed in last session. We did not get the $11 million that we had supported, but we know other communities like West Lynn and Oregon City are extremely supportive of it, and we'd like to, you know, keep on the same page as our fellow communities. So I would say that about the locks.
And then the, the last one I have is, there's another one in here under Housing and Community Development. It talks about maintaining Oregon, Oregon law, I'm sorry. Maintain Oregon Land Use Laws requirement that urban development activities occur in cities. Wilsonville opposes efforts to encourage, encourage urban-level development outside of cities. What's the background? Why, why do we care about that specifically?
Under Oregon's land use structure, and particularly in the, the metro urban area, there's a, a desire, and I think also a convenience practicality in having the, you know, sewer or the water be in an urban area where the city can say, we are able to serve this. Kind of goes back to, you know, is, is the legislature going to supersite something and then say, yeah, but now, city, you have to serve it? Also, kind of the subtext in here is making sure that we are preserving active, high, high-yield agricultural lands.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham, Mayor O'Neill, you know, being able to plan out in the future, the whole reason why we have this is so we have a 50-year timeframe to figure out how to put in sewer water infrastructure, how to pay for it in a reasonable way. So when you have development that leapfrogs is not adequately planned for, it, it's just not a good system, and it makes it more expensive in the long run. So it's the basic tenet, I think, of Oregon land use planning, going all the way back to 1973 in Senate Bill 100, so.
Counselor Shablam?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wild and Mr. Leo, for the report. I like the way that the report is laid out. It's easy to read and easy to follow. Just two comments. One, I appreciate you having aviation, keeping an eye on aviation activity. So thank you for that. That shouldn't cost a lot of money, so we won't be asking for anything special there. Also, on the frontage improvements, I, I had this sort of vision as I was reading the packets of In-N-Out Burger wanting to come in where, let's just say Burger King is right now. No plans to get rid of Burger King, I'm sure, but I just had this vision of horrible traffic backups on one of the busiest intersections if we didn't get this, the wording tweaked on that to make sure. So don't let that happen, please.
We, we will do our best. Yeah, that, that absolutely is a concern. Same thing with, like, if you've got a warehouse use that's maybe a stockpile for, for your business, and then that gets converted to a warehouse use that's more retail in nature, you know, a, a distribution center. Well, the, the amount of truck traffic coming into a warehouse that's, that's your, your business's stockpile versus a, a distribution center, that's going to look different on a day-to-day basis, right? So just making sure that we can cover what are the actual improvements that need to be made, what is the actual impact on the surrounding traffic and neighborhood.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll just say I really liked, Mr. Wild, how you set this together. It's well done, and I concur with council. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leo, too. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Safety Council Goal Update, Draft Administrative Warrant Code Provisions.
Thank you, mayor and council. I am Amanda Gail Hinman, city attorney, and tonight I have with me Tobin Montalbo, who works in my office. Tonight, we're going to be presenting, and by we, I mean mainly, Tobin, are going to be presenting on an update to the Administrative Warrants Code. So as council knows, one of your council goals is around public safety updates, and one of the strategies within that was looking at an administrative, a local administrative warrants process. So tonight, Tobin is going to walk you through a little bit of the draft code that is in your council packet. We are looking for some feedback on the language, if there's any tweaks that you want to have made, and then the plan is to bring this back for a public hearing at the next council meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tobin.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. As Amanda mentioned, my name is Tobin Montalbo. I'm an intern in her office. Today, I will be going over some of our proposed code updates regarding administrative warrants. So first, the idea behind implementing a process would to be, would be to allow city staff to enter private property for important city purposes, such as general nuisance inspection, investigation, removal, or abatement. Other processes or other purposes for entry could include engineering, public works, or building inspections, if that may be necessary. Currently, there is no process, or currently, city staff may only enter private property unless through an agreement with the property owner. And if that consent is withheld, then the only remaining option is litigation, which can be costly and time-consuming and then lead to possibly delayed responses. So this would be, this would be kind of like a middle ground step between those two ideas. And then administrative warrants process would also fill the current gap that exists between the county's process and the city. Clackamas County currently has a county process for issuing administrative warrants, but it's only available for police officers and county officials or staff following up on possible county code violations, so it's not available to Wilsonville staff. You can go next. So some of the specific code provisions that we are proposing. Firstly, the code would grant the municipal judge the actual authority to issue the administrative warrants upon application by city staff, acting under the authority of the, of the city manager. It would, it also then lays out the specific requirements for issuance, and then the specific requirements to be followed during the execution of the warrant. So the issuance procedures, prior to even seeking a warrant, the staff, the city official must first make a reasonable attempt to locate the property owner or any others that have control over the property, present their credentials, and then request entry. Only if this step is completed and then entry is still denied, may a warrant then be sought. A warrant will only be issued upon either reasonable, reasonable belief or suspicion of a code violation, if there is a known nonconformity with a health, public protection, or safety ordinance or rule, or if investigation is necessary to verify the condition of a location. Additionally, to one of those three reasons, an affidavit is required to be submitted, particularly describing the applicant's status, the specific code provision, ordinance, or regulation, the location to be entered, the purpose of the entry, and the specific basis upon which cause exists. Additionally, the affidavit must also include a statement that entry was sought and refused, or that the property is believed to be unoccupied, or that entry may be frustrated without a warrant. After all, this cause will only be found to exist if there are existing legislative or administrative standards, or if an investigation is necessary to determine if a violation is occurring, or if there is a reason to believe that a removal or abatement may be necessary. After examining the applicant under oath, if satisfied, the judge may then issue an administrative warrant specifying specifically who is authorized to enter the property, if it's who it is or multiple people, the specific property or building to be entered, and then the purpose and the limitations of the actual warrant. When executing the warrant, the authorized person or persons will first attempt to present their credentials, authority, and the purpose of the warrant to an occupant. If the property is unoccupied, they may enter, and then the warrant will be left in an obvious location within the property. If any items were authorized to be seized in the warrant, a list of anything that was seized will be also left in an obvious location within the property. Forceable entry is permitted in specific situations, and only if authorized by the judge for a specified reason. Reasons for this, for forceable entry being permitted may be if a code violation presents an immediate health or safety threat, or if prior attempts to serve the warrant have been refused, or if the property is unoccupied and the owner is still refusing consent to enter. I know that was fast. Do you guys have any questions?
And I will also note that we also ran this language by our municipal court judge, and we're, we're able to get his feedback on, on the process and the code language specifically.
Thank you for the presentation. I note that you have Thank you for the presentation. I note that you have some information up on Let's Talk Wilsonville page. Have you received any feedback specifically on this one?
No feedback on this one.
Okay. And I believe when we spoke about this earlier, was it September or August?
September, yep.
Yeah. I can't remember if you said you, I understand the county has their own administrative warrant, but we wouldn't be able to use it necessarily. But have you checked with other cities? I think where there was some discussion about that.
Yes. So this is a very common process for most cities. Actually, it's kind of surprising that we don't have this process, and that may be because previously, the county process had been sufficient for the most part. So we, the inspiration for the draft code language comes from several cities, including Beaverton, Tigard, Corvallis. We looked at a wide swath of different cities and sort of pulled apart the provisions we thought best suited our city's current position. And then I will also say that I have personally talked with different municipal court judges in other jurisdictions who have this process about how that process works for them, from these jurisdictions that we pulled this language from. So I feel pretty confident in the language that we're utilizing, based on the review that staff has done and the feedback that we've received from those who are utilizing it right now.
And then a follow-up to my second question there is, have you been able to talk to cities that have been able to utilize this in specific cases, and how did it turn out?
Yeah, I will say that this is an extremely rare process, and for any city that has utilized it that we've talked with, it is the process of last resort. So generally speaking, if it is utilized, sometimes it's only, it's not even once a year that it comes up. But it is that effective tool, particularly, when it comes up, is generally, there is a very significant health, safety issue that somebody needs to get on the property for. I will say that we have had, particularly the building official and I, have had those circumstances, where thankfully, after a lot of really hard work, we've been able to get somebody able to talk to a property owner for us to get on-site because of very extreme health, safety issues, but us being left with, we need, we need solutions when time is of the essence. And not only to protect that property and that property owner, but adjacent properties as well. Thank you.
All right. Given, the words "reasonable suspicion" jumped out at me as the threshold for what we're looking at. So assuming, since you've already spoken with Judge Winehouse, that is the threshold, not probable cause?
Correct, yeah. And what we also talked about is that for Judge Winehouse in particular, that especially, at least initially, every person, anytime that we would seek an administrative warrant, that there would be the authorized individual going under oath in front of the judge, talking through, not just providing the affidavit, but talking through the circumstances that that person believes the warrant is necessary.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all I got.
Counsel President.
Well done, Mr. Montalvo.
Thank you. Counsel President Perry.
Thank you for the report. It seems like it's really clear and well-written, well-thought-out, and that it's a tool that we'll have in our kit, but not necessarily have to use on an everyday basis, but more on an extreme, once-in-a-blue-moon basis. What kind of feedback did the municipal judge give to you?
Generally, I mean, I don't want to speak for him, but I will say that generally, the feedback was supportive, and he had a couple edits that are incorporated into the materials that are before you tonight. Minor details.
Thank you.
Mr. Scholl.
I think I just answered my question, but is there a timeframe as this moves through the process? Is there, are there specific times?
Are you talking about for the adoption or for the actual warrant process?
The execution of the actual process.
Do you want to talk about the time periods for?
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, it's that if an administrative warrant is issued, then you, it's within 10 days. Is it 10 weekdays?
I think it's 10, I think it's 10 days.
Yeah, okay. So 10 days, in less extended by the municipal, by the judge.
Thank you.
I think it's well put together and well researched. My question was taken from me. I really wanted to know what the judges were going to say, and we got that. So thank you.
All right. So the plan is, it sounds like, I'm hearing we're good to move forward with the code language as has been presented tonight, so we'll plan for a public hearing at our next council meeting. All right.
And I found it, it's 10 business days.
10 business days, thank you, which we did define.
Yes.
As when, yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we're at the end of our pre-council work session. We're adjourned until 7:00 PM.
I will call to order the meeting of the Willstow City Council for November 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council President Berry.
Present.
Councilor Chevlin.
Here.
Councilor Cunningham.
Here.
Mayor O'Neil.
Here. Council President, uh, Council, oh, excuse me, sorry. Please join and stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Berry can have a motion to approve the falling order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0. We're now going to turn to the oath of office administered by Judge Fred Winehouse to newly appointed Councilor Scam, excuse me, Sam Skoll.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sam Skoll.
I, Sam Skoll.
The undersigned?
The undersigned.
Having been appointed to the office of Wilsonville City Councilor?
Having been appointed to the offices of...
Wilsonville City.
Wilsonville City Council.
On oath, depose and say?
On oath, depose and say.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon?
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor?
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor?
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we get the sign right here? And with that, we'll take a five-minute break for refreshments.
Yep.
I will call to order the meeting of the Willstow City Council for November 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council President Berry.
Present.
Councilor Chevlin.
Here.
Councilor Cunningham.
Here.
Mayor O'Neil.
Here. Council President, uh, Council, oh, excuse me, sorry. Please join and stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Berry can have a motion to approve the falling order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0. We're now going to turn to the oath of office administered by Judge Fred Winehouse to newly appointed Councilor Scam, excuse me, Sam Skoll.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sam Skoll.
I, Sam Skoll.
The undersigned?
The undersigned.
Having been appointed to the office of Wilsonville City Councilor?
Having been appointed to the offices of...
Wilsonville City.
Wilsonville City Council.
On oath, depose and say?
On oath, depose and say.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon?
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor?
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor?
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we get the sign right here? And with that, we'll take a five-minute break for refreshments.
Yep.
I'll call to order the meeting of the Willstow City Council for November 3, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Will the City Recorder please call the roll?
Council President Barry. Councilor Chevlin.
Here.
Councilor Cunningham.
Here.
Mayor O'Neil.
Here. Council President, Council, oh, excuse me, sorry. Please join and stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Barry can have a motion to approve the falling order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0. We're now going to turn to the oath of office administered by Judge Fred Winehouse to newly appointed Councilor Scam, excuse me, Sam Skoll.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sam Skoll.
I, Sam Skoll.
The undersigned.
The undersigned.
Having been appointed to the office of Wilsonville City Councilor.
Having been appointed to the office of...
Wilsonville City.
Wilsonville City Council.
On oath, depose and say.
On oath, depose and say.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Wilsonville City Councilor.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll take a five-minute break for refreshments. I call the city council meeting back into order at 7:10 p.m. Good evening, everyone. I want to hope everyone had a safe and fun Halloween trick-or-treating last Friday and over the weekend. As usual, I have a lot to say, but tonight I have no voice to say it. So most of my comments, or actually all my comments, will be in my written agenda and will be submitted to the City Recorder for anybody's availability after. I'm going to jump right to letting everybody know that the next city council meeting will be on Monday, November 17, starting at 7:00 p.m. I'm going to turn to communications. And it's my understanding the City's Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee, which serves to connect Wilsonville to diverse perspectives and lived experiences of its people, advocating for access and opportunity to every committee member. Please welcome DEI Committee Chair Carla Brashir and Zoe Monburt for the City Administration. Thank you.
So for those of you that don't know me, I am Zoe Monburt. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I am the staff liaison to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And as the mayor stated, I'm joined by our current Chair, Carla Brashir, this evening to provide some updates on their accomplishments, as well as what they're planning for the next year. So this presentation is really just intended to provide the council with an update and keep them informed on the work of this committee. And as we have a newer city council, I wanted to take a moment to go over how we got here. So the committee was established in 2021, and that was after we heard from our community. From that time, the city council directed staff to create this committee. That occurred in January of 2021, and then passed Resolution 2893 to adopt the committee bylaws in May of that year, and two weeks later appointed the first committee of 13 members. The committee worked with a consultant to develop their mission and vision later that And the city council adopted the DEI Committee's strategic plan that included the mission and vision by Resolution 2927 in July of 2022. And that plan included three core areas and 15 actions. In August of 2022, the committee prioritized those actions, leading to the work that the chair is going to share with you. And then finally, the committee was added to the city code by unanimous vote of the city council in September of 2024. And this is now a standing committee, similar to Parks and Rec and the library, and that was approved by Ordinance Number 893. And I will turn it over to Chair Brashir.
Thank you, Zoe. Thank you, Council, for having me. Unfortunately, my vice chair, Erica Pham, was unable to make it this evening, so I'll be filling in both of our roles. This year, the committee has received questions about the status of our committee and if the work would continue following the executive orders signed by the president in January. The committee remains focused on our vision. The Wilsonville Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is a beacon of connectivity, empowered to take thoughtful action to ensure sustained community collaboration, to foster a climate of inclusion and belonging for all residents in and visitors to Wilsonville. We, as a committee, remain focused on creating and maintaining a welcoming community in The committee had two articles in the Boones Ferry Messenger and partnered with the Wilsonville Public Library to host Oregon Black Pioneers Racing to Change exhibit during February. Additionally, the committee hosts a speaker series. If you missed any of these informative sessions, you can find the recordings through the city's DEI Committee page. This is a list of speakers that we hosted over the last year. In June, we had Immigrant Heritage Month by Teresa Alonso Leon. The former state representative shared her story about being an immigrant, growing up in Marion County, and becoming a state representative. In May, we had Celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month by Judy Margals, described, she described the history of the Jewish community in Oregon. In March, we had Celebrating Women's History Month by Jeannie Nugent, Cara Torano, and Pluchette Fontenat. They shared their lived experience as women getting their foot in the door and establishing careers in tech. In February, we had Black Exclusion in Oregon by Maria Rocker of the Oregon Black Pioneers, who shared the history of exclusion laws in Oregon. In October, we recently had Supporting Transgender Family, Friends, and Neighbors by Maddie Wazo, Basic Rights Oregon, Frankie Lane from NAMI Clackamas, and community members Mina Lemke, Micah Bishop, Dr. Lejoy Bishop, who all shared lived experiences and resources. The committee will still be discussing the speaker series topics for the year 2026. The committee partners with city departments, boards, and community groups. For example, the committee often provides letters of support for grant applications. We've partnered with the Wilsonville Muslim Community Center to gather hygiene supplies during Ramadan to support Wilsonville community sharing. We meet annually with the ACHC, and committee members will participate on their art review panel as needed, also the pride mural. We also partner with local businesses since their generous sponsorship contributions make our events what they are. This was our fifth annual Juneteenth event. This event had grown significantly from our first event in 2021. This year, the event featured a DJ, VN, PRT, drumming and dance group, Anonzi Beat, speakers from the Black Student Union, and keynote speaker Ty Harden more. We were also honored to have Governor Tina Kotek attend the event. We were delighted to have her speak and participate. This was our first official pride celebration. In 2024, the first pride mural and reception were hosted. Due to the community's support for this event, the committee reached out to local businesses to fund the event. This event included face painting, tie dye craft, book giveaways, and a speaker. This will be our second annual Las Posadas. This event has crafts, refreshments, and celebrations. The student for Glorio dancers were a hit, and the community filled the community center with cheer. The first Lunar Year, excuse me, Lunar New Year event happened last year. This was, this event was more successful than we could have imagined. The Oregon Chinese Coalition had dancing, drums, and other performances to celebrate the Year of the Snake. The event also included crafts and a wishing tree. The committee completed their work on the Town Center Street Naming Project at the end of 2024, and the first name was assigned to a new street in Town Center. The committee also completed an optional staff resource to support them as they develop future events and programs. The committee submitted a grant for Mobi Mat access pads for Town Center Park to make community events more inclusive. The committee selected a design by Wilsonville High School student Malia Rodenbeck for the 2025 Pride Pin. The pin was so popular, all the 2025 pins have been given out. And just as a note, Malia Rodenbeck is now a junior at Wilsonville High School. She's active in wrestling and loves her graphic design class. So we were really proud to showcase her work in that pin, and hopefully we can do it again this year by using a Wilsonville High School student. For 2026, the committee plans to continue providing educational programs and events that create a sense of belonging for all. There is over $16,000 committed to events so far, and we are still working on sponsorships for next year. We also hope to increase community partnership, specifically with our local businesses. Here are the upcoming dates for our community events. I will note, Las Posadas is coming up on December 18. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve on this committee. I just want to say that I've really enjoyed my experience. I've been serving for a little over two years now. My favorite part of serving on the DEI Committee are the people that I have met. Our committee is made up of a variety of ages, racial backgrounds, professional backgrounds, people that I probably wouldn't have had the opportunity to connect with if it weren't for the committee. I also just want to note the incredible work of Diane Imel, who passed away this year. She is a very good friend, and her work will continue through the DEI Committee, I hope, so that we can continue to honor her and her advocacy, particularly for people with disabilities. The DEI Committee, I think, does an amazing job of serving this community. We don't seek to create any division. We are only trying to create inclusion and opportunities for our community to connect together. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to comment. I think you guys do a wonderful job. I've, my family and I have enjoyed going to many of these events. I think it truly brings a sense of belonging, includes everybody. We learn a lot from various cultures and differences. I've learned vast amounts, just going to these events, and nice work. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Chevlin.
Thank you. I just want to also thank you. You've done a wonderful job, and I always look forward to your events, and they're very, very well done. Thank you.
Councilor Skoll.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the presentation and just say, moving forward, I hope to be able to come and visit and get to know what you're all up to, and maybe I can get involved in some way to help out. So thank you.
Absolutely, and we would absolutely invite any help. So thank you.
Anything further?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I understand from staff, what was originally scheduled Community Enhancement Project Update with Heart of the City has been rescheduled to a later date. So now we will be moving to community input and announcements. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city's business, or any matter over which the council has control. It's also the time to address items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please, when conveying your remarks, whatever they may be, please speak to the council as a whole, and not directly to any one member of council during your comments. Also, please note, you can use the podium or sit at the tables in front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room, or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record, and state your address, or state that your address is provided on the speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You're welcome to submit information writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with any member of council to discuss your concerns further. First person is Brad Williams.
Last Saturday, I had, was fortunate enough to be able to attend one of the focus groups for the Town Center Plan. There were three groups, as I understand it. The one was the pro, one was the con, and one was the neutral. I was in the con group. I'm not a fan of this plan. I never thought it would get off the ground because it looked like the only way that it would happen was if fries were to fold, as well as the Regal Cinema were to fold. Well, son of a gun, you know? We have a pandemic, and those two businesses didn't survive. When I look at the city's plan for the proposed street network, as well as the proposed land uses, it looks like a lot more businesses will need to be displaced for the city to achieve its vision. In fact, it looks like most of the existing businesses will be displaced. Do they know that? Is McDonald's, as it stands right now, in the city's plan? What about Ace Hardware? What about all the other single-story businesses currently occupying Town Center Loop? Every land use zone proposed by the city for the Town Center Plan is mixed use with buildings two to five stories high. The people in my focus group were from various economic backgrounds. One of the things that I found surprising was that there were some low-income people there that had the same sort of concerns as the high-income people. And I say that as surprising because I thought they would have immediately gravitated to more low-income housing, which they would like to see, but they didn't believe that this plan was the way to go about it. Their concerns, like with everybody, were traffic and congestion, as well as maintaining Wilsonville's small-town feel. Yes, it's a city, but it's still got kind of a small-town vibe. In our opinion, the group's opinion, that having five-story or higher buildings in the middle of town would destroy that small-town feel. It sounds magical, right? Being able to stroll down some street with all these shops and everything, and the trees, and you can imagine it, right? But I don't think that the city has enough people with disposable income to support those shops. You would have to, especially if you're going to increase the number of low-income families, which it sounds like that's in the plan, according to the annual report. And I don't have enough time to finish everything that I'm saying, so I will come back at the next meeting and finish what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Katie Dunwell.
I'm pleased to be here as a private citizen, and I'm pleased to see so many people here in the audience tonight. During my time on council, I worked to bring our community together in a spirit of togetherness and unity. Quite frankly, in my thoughts, any remnants of that were abandoned by this council when it blatantly ignored community concern over the selection of my replacement. There were six qualified candidates, and the council members were only given a few hours to review the questionnaire responses before being required to rank the candidates prior to the survey being closed. Whether or not serial conversations occurred will likely never be known, but the clear concern of citizens without any significant further discussion or voting pause, given the gravity expressed by members of this city, was an embarrassment. Thus, the timing of my post on Facebook. I didn't plan on going public with my own story, despite the fact that I heard whispers in our community of the mayor's behavior. I also want to thank many in our community for their responses to my heartfelt and very difficult post on our unfortunate, yet true, town square of Facebook. I have even been offered 24-hour security over my home since then in case I don't feel safe. Community members who I don't know, and a few I do know, have stepped forward with their own stories of unprofessional behavior by our mayor. But that's not what I want to address. I want to address the many individuals who reached out to me and messaged me I want to address the many individuals who reached out to me and messaged me confidentially with their own experiences. These individuals, almost all of them I do not know, and a couple of them I do know. They're even some of our local business owners. They let me know that they did not feel comfortable speaking on a public forum for fear of their business, or carelessly thrown legal threats, or even fear for their jobs. Mr. Mayor, going public made me realize I am no longer afraid of you, despite your legal threats toward me and others who shared their own truth. I ask our citizens to demand an investigation by our city into the mayor's conduct. I say this as a 67-year-old woman, as a private citizen, and as a person who grew up with bullying and name-calling just because I was a dirty kid from the rez. You say I don't look the part, Mr. Mayor, but I am a tribal elder, a Lakota Onyatta warrior, and I am ready to stand up publicly to call our citizens to action. As citizens, I encourage each of us to hold our mayor and council accountable. Raise the bar. Do not accept poor behavior.
Kyle Bunch?
Good evening, mayor and counselors. Kyle Bunch, my address is on the speaker card. I want to start by saying how much I love the city. Wilsonville is a place that welcomes all, a community that draws its strength from diversity of thought, background, and experience. That's what makes us strong. That's what makes us Wilsonville. And lately, we've seen our citizens show up peacefully, passionately, and proudly to express their voices. Over 2,000 people came together for the Charlie Kirk Memorial. 1,400 lined the streets for the No Kings Rally. These gatherings remind us of something fundamental, that our First Amendment rights matter, that we are still a community where citizens speak truth to power. But what's equally clear and equally troubling is that some of our elected officials only believe in inclusion when it's convenient. They wrap themselves in the language of DEI. They wear the inclusion hero cape, but they refuse to include those who see the world differently. We've seen it. We've lived it. When Mr. Workman stood before this council asking valid questions about his property, he was dismissed with a cold, "Are you finished? Thanks." No follow-up, no courtesy, no respect. That's not public service, that's arrogance. When citizens voiced concerns over the recent appointment process, they were thanked and ignored. "Thank you for your comments," and the door slammed shut. And when former Councilor Dunwell, a public servant who gave her heart to this community, resigned and said she felt bullied, what did you do? You dismissed her feelings. You rationalized. You minimized. But if inclusion means anything, it means believing people when they say they've been hurt. It means standing up for dignity, even when it's uncomfortable. What we're seeing instead is a pattern of culture of bullying, intimidation, and hypocrisy, and our citizens see it too. Some have reached out to me over the last couple of weeks to have coffee because they want something different, but they're afraid of what might happen if they speak out against Wilsonville political groups with whom they've long aligned. Says you don't care to listen to people when they speak out and yet don't want people crying in the town square of social media. Let me read what they're saying for the public record. By the way, these are people from every political persuasion, including some who once voted for elected officials and they regret. Quote, "There has to be an apology and a transformation to regain the public's trust," end quote. Quote, "I was on a PTSA board. I was bullied in meetings. He's forceful and condescending," end quote. Quote, "What's the point of leading a community if you're simply a bully?" end quote. Quote, "As someone who's a minority myself, I didn't feel he was genuine, just another corrupt politician," end quote. Quote, "He's building a pattern of intimidation and legal threats to science people that's unacceptable," end quote. Quote, "Men speaking over women and discouraging them is still commonplace. It's unacceptable that we lost a leader who loved Wilsonville," end quote. Bullying is not leadership. These aren't political attacks, these are cries for integrity. These are people saying we deserve better, because we do. Leadership's not about controlling the narrative, it's about earning trust. It's about, not about silencing voices, it's about listening to them. Wilsonville deserves leaders who build bridges, not walls. Leaders who lead with humility, not hubris. Leaders who remember that public office is not a throne, it's a trust. We're a city that values inclusion, but inclusion without integrity is just a slogan. We stand for safety, we stand for dignity, we stand for respect, we stand for community. It's time we live up to the values we claim to champion for the sake of our citizens, our future, and our city. It's going to be a long three years if this is how our leaders plan to operate. It's high time for a true, genuine apology, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Andrew, Andrew Engel?
Thank you. Slightly different topic. On Monday, October 13th, the Westland-Wilsonville School District notified the community that ICE had been parked on school property and that the district had asked them to leave. I appreciated the mayor's subsequent statement regarding Wilsonville being a city of belonging, but for the past three weeks, ICE presence has continued, and they have taken people from our community. I heard that they took someone today. Without knowing any of those individual circumstances, I believe that is wrong. Immigrants live, work, and communicate and contribute to our daily communities, daily, uneventfully, often unrecognized. They are family, friends, coworkers, and when they are taken by federal agents, children lose parents, wives and husbands are separated, and livelihoods crumble. We have a lot of fellow Americans who feel harmed by the existence of immigrants, and as we've seen in our recent history, we see some of those fellow citizens willing to trample both humanity and civil rights to make themselves feel safe. The fact is, the United States' fundamental charters, the Declaration, and the Constitution assert the rights of every individual without reservation of class or status against government abuse and infringement. The feds are constantly screwing up, accidentally or on purpose. They are profiling and detaining citizens and non-citizens alike without warrants. They are scanning people's biometrics, bringing the military into our cities, and even raiding apartment buildings from helicopters. They are deliberately inflicting harm and trauma on communities to intimidate people and drive out immigrants. ICE and CBP can and will infringe anyone's freedoms and rights in pursuit of their directives, and this is a problem for all of us, especially given Trump's penchant for declaring people enemies. If immigrants' rights are trampled, ours are on shaky foundation too. Currently, constitutional rights under the Fourth, Sixth, Eighth, and Tenth Amendments are most at threat. Cities and counties are our most accessible element in our structure of representative government. You are our voice to state in national governments. We have a history in this country with the Fugitive Slave Law of 1850, of states and cities standing up and rejecting bad federal law to protect black people facing dehumanization and kidnapping. While the Supreme Court and Congress have shamefully abdicated to the current administration, other levels of government are still putting in the work, seeking to rein in the tactics and abusive powers of the current administration. I've appreciated your statements over the past few weeks and your actions to stand with community members against the overreaches of the federal government. I ask that you continue that to the full extent of your power on behalf of this community. It will take a united front to push back on the federal government's naked infringement of constitutional rights and delegated powers. To that end, I also encourage you to work with communities, cities, and counties at whatever level you're able to, to continue to push back and work together against this overreach. Thank you.
Athena Contreras?
Hi, my name is Athena Contreras. My address is listed. I, um, I'm actually from West Lynn, but I drove down here tonight because I wanted to show some solidarity with what I had seen, that you had written in the, in the opinion piece about immigrants and you, uh, community and being important to include everybody from the community. And I'm here because of a lot of what I just heard said, um, that means a lot to me, and I really think we are two cities that are very, very closely aligned, and that all of our community matters. We all share the same students, the same soccer fields, the same parks, and I want to be here to show some support and solidarity for people who care as much about that and our constitutional rights as, as I do. And that's all I wanted to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Lee Barkman?
My name's Lee Barkman, and I live, uh, on Canyon Creek Meadows. My address is on file. Where'd that come from? Tomorrow marks a year since we voted in a highly debated election about the future of Wilsonville. The results of last year's election gave us a council pose to begin planning and financing a new town center along with a bike bridge over I-5. However, since that election a year ago, yes, we've had some community drama, but from my perspective, not enough has been done to make the town center a reality. We know that a referendum position circulated by citizens would have, if passed, placed permanent legal roadblocks to any city-initiated urban development. This would have made the city council basically toothless when it comes to pushing an agenda tied to changing, to the changing realities of the city. However, I hope your recent unanimous vote to move forward with the improvements on Brown Road using urban development funds will now put an end to the hesitation of the council to move forward. Apparently, this urban renewal referendum is still being pushed. It's not clear, but clearly has not sparked much enthusiasm when the community has a minimum number of signatures, as of now, have not been obtained. If it was successful, simple projects like the Brown Road project would have been impossible, much less the Town Center. Thankfully, Wilsonville residents seem to have thought it through. I think many of us have read the small print on the position and see that it's not good. Cross that out. The simple and clear necessity of Brown Road, Brown, the Brown Road project shows that. A couple of years ago, many of the same citizens sponsored an anti-urban renewal project that was responsible, oh geez, I'm sorry. An anti, yeah, that's it. An anti-urban renewal project that was responsible for pushing through an off-year, extremely ill-advised term limit referendum. Now, so now term limits are your reality, and you're, and the council is on the clock. Maybe it's good, as that adds urgency to your task, because I believe any more delay will kill the Brown Center, the Town Center project, and will put the future of the city in the hands of wealthy, connected developers who will have no reason to listen to what the community wants or expects. As Brutus said to Cassius in Shakespeare's play, "Caesar, Caesar," there is a tide in the affairs of men which, taken at the flood, leads on to fortune. Omitted all voyage of their life is bound in shallows and miseries. So, now is the time to move forward. Like it or not, this will be your legacy because you only get two terms. Undoubtedly, you will hear more manufactured outrage and delay tactics, but come on now, enough is enough. Get to work and get it done. Thank you.
Susan Reed?
Good evening. My name is Susan Reed. My information's on file. Wilsonville citizens are facing challenges now with reports in the news of ICE in nearby communities and here too, with the cutter suspension of SNAP payments, which means greater need in food pantries, as well as many of our neighbors' homes. Wilsonville community sharing already needs more donations. As citizens, I'm sure we'll put our differences aside and rise to the challenges as we are able. That's one of the things that is great about America. We can have different beliefs, strong differences, but when there's a need, we come together. I want to thank our city counselors, President Carolyn Berry, Ann Shavon, and Adam Cunningham, and I'm sure we'll be thanking our new counselor. They already spend time not only on city business here in council chambers, but in the community and neighboring areas, but now will no doubt be focusing on more immediate issues with food deserts facing us. Our mayor, Sean O'Neill, also deserves a thank you for his service to our city. He represents us not only in Wilsonville, but in the broader community, from the governor's office to the state legislature, to the county, to other cities, crafting statements, making speeches, attending endless meetings, striking the right tone of inclusivity for the community, but looking out for business interests also. It can't be easy. He has to be tired, beyond tired at times. He's not Superman. He's also not just the mayor, but someone who works for a living at his law firm and wants family time with his wife and son. With all that in mind, I think we have the right person for the job in Mayor O'Neill. My husband always says, and someone famous probably said it first, "It's a tough job, but someone has to do it." I'm glad we have the right person doing it. Thank you.
Tim Knapp?
Good evening. Good to see the council. Welcome, Mr. Scholl, to what's going to be a challenging period of time in your life, I suspect. It is for all of us that have spent time on council. I've lived here for 39 years. My address is on record. The population of Wilsonville when I came in 1986 was about half of what it is now. The work that we're doing, including the Town Center Plan, is aimed at 40 years in the future. It isn't going to be the same city then as it is now, just as it's not the same city now as it was when I came in 1986. The challenge on council is to learn how to try to balance the, the values and the needs of our economy, our citizens, our business community, our public work. We know that there's always going to be agreements and disagreements. Not everyone's going to agree. Yelling at people, which sometimes happens, doesn't move our discussion forward very much. We need to understand why people see the world as they do, or why they see an issue as they do. What are the components? Challenge for council is to work to get to that background understanding. That is always a challenge, but we have to remember at the same time that no matter which perspectives we're hearing, mostly people are working for the same objective, to try to make Wilsonville a better place for us now, for our kids, for our grandkids, for people who will, will come sometime in those next 40 years that we're working on the plan for, and find the kind of community that we found when we came here in terms of values and the components that make it a desirable and special place. So we have to listen very carefully. Being on council is more listening than it is speaking, and that is something that, that never ends. I want the public to understand how hard it is to do the work on council. It's emotional at times, it's challenging almost all the time. There's always somebody that wants something different than what is happening at the moment. So understanding why people have the perspective they have and asking them to participate in discussions that will get to the why and the background and lead to some sort of group understanding about, okay, to meet the needs, we need to move in this direction. I really respect all the work that the council does. It's great to be a part of that, and I'm sure that was true for me, and it's also, I'm sure, going to be true for your work. Look forward to watching you meet those challenges. Thank you.
Rick Wallace?
Hello, my name's Rick Wallace. My address is on the speaker card. I wanted to come up here to thank the hard-working city staff and hard-working city council for everything you do, and I think you're doing a great job. Welcome, Sam Scholl. And I wanted to thank especially the mayor, Sean O'Neill, for your words at the last city council meeting, standing up for the immigrants in Wilsonville, and I agree with everything you said, and I really appreciate that you did that. That's why I really like you, is that you stand up to the bullies and you stand up for the little guy. And that's why, when you told me last year that you were running for mayor, I knew that you would do a great job, and I was so excited, because I knew that, you know, they'd put you through hell, and that because you are such a strong advocate for DEI, that you'd probably piss some people off in the meantime, and, but thank you so much for what you do. And also, I wanted to say that I am for the Town Center Plan. I wasn't on the focus group, but I think it's a great plan. I actually have a business that's on Town Center, and it's a 40-year plan, so there's a long ways to go. We have a lot of work to do. My business is actually still an existing building in the 40-year version of that plan. But I don't know if I'll, if the business will still be here at that time, but hopefully. And then- And then also, I wanted to say that I think Facebook has kind of become an issue in Wilsonville. I don't think that Facebook is a true town hall for this town. I think there's tens of thousands of people that live here, and hardly, well, definitely not most of those are on Facebook. And I think that Facebook just kind of encourages engagement, which leads to divisiveness and arguing and fake news, for lack of a better word. So I just think we need to come back to reality and not worry about, you know, what he said, she said, or what emojis, who used to respond to somebody else's post. Let's just come back to reality and work for a better Wilsonville. So, thank you very much.
Mary Rooney.
Hi, my name is Mary Rooney. My address is on the speaker card. I want to say congratulations to Sam Scholl. Welcome. Thank you, mayor and councillors, for this opportunity to speak. I want to speak a little bit about Facebook as well. Social media, such as Facebook, is a powerful way to bring attention to issues. It's important to remember that what we see on social media is just one crafted perspective. When something is posted into a Facebook group, it is subjected to the selective moderation of the group's admin and moderators. Posts can be removed, comments deleted, and people removed from the group. When this happens, it starts to look less of a fair conversation with different perspectives and more like an effort to control a specific narrative. Recently, a former city councillor dropped a post about a mayor and some of the larger Facebook groups. Given where it was posted, this wasn't an invitation to have a fair and respectful conversation about accountability. Predictably, anyone offering a different perspective on the matter was subjected to bullying and/or their comments deleted. Fortunately, many people saw this post for what it was, an attempt at a distraction. Please, focus on the pressing issues here in Wilsonville, and don't pay attention to those pushing for a soap opera. We have neighbors kidnapped and cruelly torn from their families, and people scared and scrambling to feed their children. If you're going to use Facebook, use it to help connect those in need with resources. Use it to coordinate with others to protect our neighbors. Thank you.
Brittany Carr.
Hi. My name is Brittany Carr. I live at Hathaway Court Apartments. I am here to talk about how beautiful Wilsonville is. I have been here 12 years, and I came here from a domestic migrant shelter. Pregnant, single, with two kids. I now have a doctorate. I just graduated this summer at the hands of council at Civics Academy. But I've also almost died four times here. The broken mindset of Wilsonville, with the friction that I'm hearing, it keeps us divided. At the hands of two very violent men, I almost died. In 2014, I lived in a low-income apartment and lost a child. So I built a lot, and I talk on social media about how it is a sanctuary here in Wilsonville. So that's really all I came to say. Wilsonville is a sanctuary. I think that it is held to a higher standard than most of the United States. I think that the No Kings protest was a beautiful display of the American way. But if we silence the voices in our community, our community will be exactly what you see in front of you. A person scared to speak, a person whose heart shines for many people, but is a nobody still in this town with everything she built. I live here. I work here. I talk to many companies about trying to fill these buildings, because manufacturing can help traumatize people rebuild. There is a better way, and I truly believe that Wilsonville itself can find it, as long as we keep Wilsonville's heart at the center of our thought process. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Chris Heideman.
Good evening. My name is Chris Heideman. Been, my family and I have been a Wilsonville, have been Wilsonville residents for about 10 years. I want to talk about compassion and empathy. I want, I'm asking folks to ask themselves, when they hear about a challenge that someone has, poverty, disability, economic hardships, religious challenges, do you think about, is your frame of mind, wow, that should never happen to me or my family? Are you thinking about your family and the folks who look and act just like you do? Or do you think about, that shouldn't happen to anyone? That should happen to no one, in the United States in particular? Are you concerned about the challenges? Are you only concerned about the challenges that you and your family and folks just like you have? Or are you working to minimize the pain and suffering and challenge that those who are least able to roll with those challenges, that don't have the tools, the language, the education, the privilege, if you like, to resist those challenges and to be resilient and come back from them? I'm talking about folks like immigrants. So my family came from Germany for work, right? I was a kid, but my father and mom immigrated here for work. Others immigrate here, sometimes with incredibly difficult, dangerous journeys, like from anything south of Mexico through the Darien Gap. Read about that sometimes, about how the people think, okay, I'm going to drag my kids through this, through this forest, and that's the right decision for my family and I, rather than to stay where we are. This is not a hike that I would do, and I hike, and I'm in the mountains all the time. Anyway, immigrants who came to the US for no reason then of better life, to work, to learn, to be safer, to escape persecution. The disabled, so we have a disabled daughter, an adult, our adult daughter was born deaf and special needs. These folks have had incredible challenges thrown in front of them through no fault of their own. It's a genetic roll of the dice. That's what happens. And my family, and particularly my daughter, have to roll with that. Or the impoverished, right? Whether through bad luck or through their own shitty decisions, they have these incredible challenges. They have to decide, particularly now with what's going on, whether to pay rent, buy gas for their car so they can get to their job, medical care, or food for their family. So I just want to conclude with Jesus in Matthew 25:40. What you did to the least of these, you did to me, right? According to Jesus, mercy, compassion, kindness, empathy are acts done directly to Him. Thank you.
Okay, Bill Bagnall.
Good evening. My name is Bill Bagnall. My, our information is on the card. Two things I wanted to address. I wanted to challenge something that Mr. Candrian brought up in his testimony two weeks ago. And the reason I want to do this is because it really is the underpinning of what some folks are claiming is pay-to-play or something like that. He said, and I watched his testimony again this morning, he said that Sam Scholl was the second-highest individual donor to Sean O'Neill's campaign. I helped head up Sean's campaign, so I knew all those numbers pretty well. And I went and looked, and indeed, that's wrong.
No, it's not. It's on Orstar.
It's on Orstar. Go look it up. There's five people that gave the same amount, and one person that gave more.
Yeah, but you can second. That's how it works.
Right, but there's one person who gave more, and there's five people that gave.
We can't do back and forth. We can't do back and forth.
You can speak under public comment.
Okay.
We can't do.
Okay. Fair enough. And I will, in the spirit of safe discussion, he gave the same amount as five other people. And I want to point out that that amount is 2.1% of Mr. O'Neill's campaign. And I don't think he would know, I don't think Sam would know that someone would be resigning and that he would be queuing himself up to fill that seat. I think that's unreasonable, and it's unfair. And just today, one of the seven people that applied posted online that she reviewed all of the applications, and he was by far the most qualified candidate. So I am just putting this out there because I feel like it's an unfair slam on him and separate. I have had one coffee with Sam. Sam and I are not friends. We have no relationship other than what I've gotten to know since reading his packet and everyone's packet. The second item that I want to address, again, is Facebook. And I think people need to understand that stories are suppressed and stories are amplified. We saw in the last campaign, a story completely suppressed from voters, and we see now one amplified. And someone that helps is a de facto manager on all these pages said, quote, "This is exciting. Somehow, I think 97070 Small Town Politics will continue to be like a soap opera. That shocking cliffhanger ending on Friday we all waited for. It was exciting, yes, but storylines will continue on Monday's episode." So it's a game to some people, and it's something that they have jumped on. And there's a family, there's a wife, there's a kid involved, just as there was previously. Thank you.
Do it on Zoom. Okay. Now let's turn to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. Council President Berry.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you again, I say it every week, that we have our meetings for everybody that takes their time and provides their citizen input. Hearing what people are thinking is really valuable to me, and it's one of my favorite parts of the city council meetings, so thank you. So, let's see. This, in the last couple of weeks, I had a total knee replacement, and so that's the reason why I'm working from home today. I'm also a little bit behind on some of my email correspondence, so if you've sent me an email, I, it's not that I haven't read it, I just haven't had a chance to respond yet, and I plan to do so this week. And I appreciate that people are taking time to write emails to me. I welcome phone calls and text messages, too. And then also, related to the knee replacement, because my mobility was more limited, I thought that this would be a good opportunity for me to find out a little bit more about our smart transit opportunities in Wilsonville. And so I checked into the Dial-A-Ride program, and I've found it, I've used it several times now. I found it really easy to sign up, to get a driver to come to my home, take me to my doctor's appointments, and then at the end of my appointment to come back and give me a ride back home. It's just, it's been an awesome, awesome opportunity, and a godsend for me. If you're riding within the city of Wilsonville, it's a free service. If you're riding just outside the city, I think it's a $3 fee for a one-way fare. And anyway, I encourage everybody to look into it that might need an extra ride now and then. The other thing, that working from home because of my knee replacement, I'm just really grateful for our technology that we can do Zoom meetings. And so I did take time to watch the three Wilsonville Town Center focus group meetings. I was really, really impressed with the number of people who volunteered to participate in the meetings. The city hired a consultant. We're trying to work with people to find out what their views are in terms of the town center plan, you know, why they might be in favor of it, why, what their hesitation might be, and so that we can learn if we need to update the plan, or if we need to educate the city on a wider basis. Anyway, I really appreciate people taking their time to attend those two-hour meetings. Let's see, coming up this week, I plan to also attend, I assume, the Tourism Promotion Committee meeting. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate Sam Scholl on his appointment to the city council. I look forward to working with Sam, along with the other city councillors, to advance the city of Wilsonville's goals. I believe that as a council, we can build on what we have as common ground, that we, if we listen with respect and ask appropriate questions, that we'll seek the best overall solutions to move our city forward for its best future. And I know that there's a lot of different opinions within the city, but there's a lot of common ground, too. And if we focus in on that common ground of, you know, what attracted us to move to Wilsonville and to stay in Wilsonville, and how can we make it a better city for our future? And like it was mentioned earlier, the town center plan is going to be the heart of the city, but it's a 40-year plan, and so it's going to take some time to implement, but we can all work together, and I really believe in Wilsonville, and it's an honor to be on the council, and I appreciate all the other councillors. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you. So I had the unique opportunity to attend the TVFNR Community Fire Academy on October 24th. It was a really good experience to be able to go out and spend some time with some of our local heroes. We started Friday morning at 7:00 AM with what I called the sales pitch, get all the people in the room and talk about, you know, the value that TVFNR offers, which is plenty. Looking a little tired there, 7:00 AM. They woke me up, though, when they, we suddenly had an emergency in the back of the room, and my police training kicked in, and I ran back and, with a smile on my face, checked for a pulse. No pulse, so right into CPR, kicked right back in, like the old days, so, and you can kind of just scroll through. So after the academy was over, so actually, out there, we got to pull hose off the firetruck, hook it up to the fire hydrant, and, you know, play hose dragger for a little bit, and then we got to breach a door using the, gosh, I always mess this word up, the hal- halogen, thank you. I always mess that word up. And we got to drive a firetruck. And also, right there, my father-in-law was a firefighter down in Torrance, California, and when they moved, when he and my, and my wife's family moved up here in, I guess, mid-'90s, he was also an instructor at Portland Community College. And so he had, he gave me his helmet to wear for the day, which was kind of cool, to be able to wear his helmet out there for that event. And then we got to cut the car apart, and that was the most awesome part, probably. So I'm sawing off the windshield right there so we can get to one of the beams, and then cut the lid off and just take it all apart. So a lot of fun, a lot of good opportunity to get out and meet the leadership out at TVFNR, and that's the car when we were done with it. I'm in the middle there with my tongue out. They said to be silly, so. One of the things that I did get to do, though, while I was out there during the sales pitch, they were talking about some of, you know, where the fire stations are across the district, what the response times look like, what kind of resources they can get out to certain areas in a, in what kind of timeframe, and where those challenges lie. And one of the things that I picked up on is that the western side of our city is actually, we can get an engine out there pretty quick. We have an engine over on Kinsman, but it takes a little bit longer to get more resources over there. And that, along with the opportunity that Ms. Rooney invited the mayor and myself out to earlier this year, to go take a hike through Graham Oaks Park and look at the- to go take a hike through Graham Oaks Park and look at the fire danger there from the overgrowth of the metro-owned Graham Oaks Park. It kind of signaled to me that, you know, if we can only get a limited number of resources there in a short period of time, it's an even more, it's an even greater danger than just the lack of maintenance that we saw out there. Because it's going to take time to get there and time to get resources there to put out a fire should we get a conflagration that begins over there. So I got to grab one of the chief's ears and have a little conversation with about it and see what we could do to hopefully get maybe just some, an assessment from TVFNR to come out, kind of look at it and support our position that we really need to make sure that that area is taken care of and that we have defensible space around our neighborhoods so that we don't end up losing any properties over there. Unfortunately, I also was notified that there was a house fire in Old Town yesterday. And it was a total loss, unfortunately. There's a family who's displaced. And I, last I heard, it sounds like they have some resources and kind of keeping an eye on that to see if there's anything that our community can do to help that family. So anyways, after the fire, after the academy out here, I got to go hang out at Five Twos. That's the thing I learned up here. You call your, the fire stations are Five Twos or Five Ones. Don't call it Station 52 because they'll look at you like you're a nerd. That's the one over on Kinsman. I got to hang out with Captain Travis, our driver Chrissy, Nate, Miranda, and the probationary firefighter, Kayden. He had just gotten stuck on, he was at a bachelor party in New Orleans, was coming back, got stuck on a plane for hours and got in at 4:00 a.m. and then had to go right onto shift. And luckily for him, we had a quiet night. We got to sleep through the whole night. But we did get to go out. The one, probably the most interesting call was a vehicle out at Baker and Two's decided to shear a power pole and drive into the field in the wet rain. So that was kind of cool. PD took it over within 10, 15 minutes and we were back out of the rain. And then we got to go to the football game. So really fun experience, good opportunity, great way to make connections. I think it might be a little, I don't know if you ever got to do it, Brian? I put in, I told them that our next city, because I think it's a little late, but I think our next city manager should definitely go do it and anybody up here that wants to do it should.
I was in the middle of third grade, so I think so. I think that counts.
And I did.
Yeah, it's, 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 did you get to cut a car apart? Cutting a car apart is awesome.
I did, I did that earlier this year. It's a great experience, a great experience.
So anyways, I went right from that on Saturday morning and joined in on October 25th that morning. Helped out with Bulky Way State with Rotary, an awesome service, being able to go out and help people who, you know, aren't able to get some of that bulky stuff out themselves. And so got a, I think we had 32 households that overall got hit up. Is that right?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And then October 27th, I attended the Water Intake Facilities Meeting, way less cool than the Fire Academy. Get out of your keyboard. And then this last Saturday on November 1st, I had the honor of attending the Celebration of Life for Mr. Wayne Lowery. Mr. Lowery was, he was really a linchpin of this, of this community. He, you know, if anybody's been here for a while, they remember Lowery's Market, Lowery's IGA. That was well before my time. But it was really good to hear the stories about him, what just a kind and good person he was. Kind of reminded me of It's a Wonderful Life. Like what would this city look like if he hadn't have been a part of it? It would be completely different. And I think it's rare to find somebody like that. And so I was really, I was really happy to be able there, to be able to be there to represent our city and be representative of the city, to, you know, shake his family's hand and his wife's hand and thank them for the life and what he gave to our city. He was part of building the very first fire department here in the city. He was one of the volunteer firefighters at it. Helped build and built the first kindergarten, which later became the first library. And was just always out in the community, helping people and finding ways to help. If somebody needed something, if a neighbor needed something, he was out there taking care of them. And the stories like this were just, I mean, they just, they float so freely. Just an amazing person and someone that, you know, I don't think comes along very long and, you know, I would, I would, you know, be proud to emulate. That was kind of it for the events. The last thing that I wanted to talk about, something that was brought to my attention, sent to me this week. I don't know if anybody else on council saw it, but the Sherwood mayor, Mayor, I believe it's pronounced Rosner, Rosner?
Yes, Rosner.
Rosner, thank you. He had a, he had a really good blog post this week talking about what Sherwood's doing right now. And they are actively pushing back against the erosion of local control and unfunded mandates in Sherwood. I asked Kim, I sent Kim the link to it, but I asked her to email out that link to all of council so that we stay within our public meetings laws. But I think it's a good read and it's something that I would suggest to everyone to take a look at. You can just look up Mayor Rosner, Sherwood, and his blog pops right, his website pops up with his blog. And I think that they're doing some, some, some smart things over there, really pushing back and trying to take back control of their city from the state overreach. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shavlon.
Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome Counselor Sam Skoll to the council. I look forward to working with you. Next, I'd like to thank the mayor for advocating for our city. Very few of you know, because he chose not to speak about it tonight. He just returned from Washington, D.C. And I think because of his cold and his voice, he, I'm hoping that we'll get a report. I know there'll be a written report that will be submitted. But it's so important that our mayor is out at the national level representing our city. And he met with our U.S. senators and our U.S. representatives. And I know that he spoke about the Boone Bridge. And I hear so often from so many citizens that they don't want anything to happen in our city, any sort of development until they, I guess that means us, they, fix the Boone Bridge. So that's what our mayor is trying to do, is work with naturally the state and the feds to understand that it's a project that's much, much bigger than us. So I appreciate the fact that he's been out traveling and became sick perhaps because of it, but representing us at the national level. I want to thank our mayor for advocating for our immigrant and our refugee neighbors so that everyone in our community feels welcomed and appreciated for the contributions that they make to our city. I want to thank him for the tireless hours that he puts in representing our city. He attends innumerable meetings and events, ribbon cuttings, ceremonies, all sorts of things that many of us have no idea that he attends. But he's there representing our city and representing our city at meetings with county and state and metro. I'm personally grateful for the work that the mayor does for our city on behalf of all of us. During the campaign season of 2024, I got to know then-citizen O'Neill. I consistently found him to be a reasonable, dedicated, well-informed individual. I learned a lot about him during this period of time. Did we ever disagree on things? Of course we did. My personal experience was that whenever those differences came up, they were always handled with an effort on his part to seek more information. And at times, we would agree to respectfully disagree. This is a new era now for our council because we have another new councillor. This always takes time to learn to work together. I'm confident with the mayor's leadership and our individual commitment to always respectfully work together, that we will be the highly functioning council this community deserves and respect and expects. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Skoll, welcome. And we're a pleasure to have you on council. Thank you for stepping up and serving the community again. Go ahead. Here. Now it's on.
It's on. How about now? We good? Yeah, Doris was telling me I need to speak up, right? I want to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to Mayor O'Neill, fellow councils, city staff, and to the community members who make Wilsonville such an outstanding place to call home. Also want to thank Katie Dunwell for her service and contributions as a councillor to our city. I'm deeply grateful for the support from my beautiful wife, Robin, two sitting back there hiding of 34 years, my mother and father, who are in their 90s and still feistiest could be, my stepmother, my brothers and three sisters and their families. And then also wish to, a special thank you to lifelong friends, Mayor Bill Velto and Ed Masters, whose friendship and mentorship have long guided and inspired me. And I think it's very special to have close friends for such a long time in today's world. And finally, to my Wilsonville friends who have supported me throughout the process. Thank you. Being here tonight and taking the oath to serve on the Wilsonville City Council is both an honor and a humbling responsibility. I'm deeply aware of the role, that this role isn't just about policies and budgets, about serving, it's about serving the community that believes in working together for a common good. A little bit more about me. I was born and raised in Pennsville, New Jersey, where my public service, where public service ran deep in the family. My grandfather also served as a township committeeman for three terms. And he also held the roles of planning, fire, and police commissioner. In the early 1970s, our family moved from across, moved across the country from New Jersey to Upland, California. It's quite a change from the rural farming community to the bustling Southern California. There, I graduated from high school, launched my first entrepreneurial venture with friends, and began my professional career in engineering and manufacturing operations within the military and defense sector. While working full-time, I attended college and eventually both, eventually graduated with both a bachelor's and an MBA degree. During my years in California, I lived in numerous Southern California committees, communities, each with its own character and sense of connection. Those included Upland, Ontario, Claremont, Mission Viejo, Irvine, and Temecula. So we had the U-Haul Gold Card. In 2010, I was recruited to Oregon as Director of Operations for ITW in Twalton, where we designed and manufactured commercial cooking equipment. So I've got a pretty good background in the restaurant industry. And we were delivering to global customers. And then after 12 years, I retired as general manager in 2022. When moving to the area, Robin and I first lived in West Lynn. And after exploring the region, we chose to make Wilsonville our permanent home in 2013. That was 12 years ago and it remains one of the best decisions we ever made. For fun, we're avid walkers and hikers. I like to cook. I'm Robin's favorite five-star restaurant. I'm a home wine maker. I collect music. I've got about 30,000 to 40,000 songs now. And now I'm into basically building wooden model ships, which is a hobby that started during COVID. And I had no skills. Relative to my involvement, over the years, I've had the privilege of serving our community in several roles, including the Development Review Board, Budget Committee, Planning Commission, Red Cross, and also the Neighborhood HOA Board. Each experience has deepened my appreciation for what it takes to sustain Wilsonville's exceptional quality of life. That quality of life isn't accidental. It's the product of careful planning, collaboration, countless hours of dedication from staff, volunteers, and residents alike. And I want to give a shout out and a thank you to Mayor Knapp and Mayor Fitzgerald for basically providing me with those opportunities to get involved and serve on the boards and commissions. Public service for me is a natural extension of my desire in making community, making a community contribution and connection. In my professional life, I've had the opportunity to have worked in three countries, the U.S., Mexico, and Canada, and remotely managed satellite operations in the UK, China, India, and also on the Navajo Reservation in Arizona. With this diverse cultural experience, I've learned that strong leadership isn't about being the loudest voice in the room. It's about creating space for others to be heard and valued in many languages. Much of my leadership approach is shaped by the book, Contrarian, Contrarian's Guide to Leadership by Stephen Sample, who was a professor and president of USC. And it was published in 2005, which teaches that effective leaders think independently, question conventional wisdom, and rely on judgment and humility rather than popularity or rigid rules to make sound decisions. Of the 15 core tenets in the book, three basic principles have guided me the most. Listen first, talk later, think gray. Most decisions aren't black and white. And think free, think out of the box and always brainstorm. As a councillor, I intend to carry those tenets forward, making decisions rooted in data, informed by community input and guided by long-term sustainability. My goal has never been to have all the answers, but to ask challenging questions, listen carefully, and help our city make informed, forward-looking decisions. The council's goals, financial health, public safety, parks and recreation, communication and engagement, reflect who we are as a community. In alignment with those goals, my immediate focus, and what I'd like to be focused on, is economic development, supporting local businesses, attracting opportunity, revitalizing available commercial and industrial space, along with basically working on new growth. Public safety, broadening our view to include disaster preparedness and community resilience. And communication, ensuring that residents, organizations, and businesses have a voice in shaping our city's future. As a new councillor, I plan to listen, learn, and to engage so that the decision, so our decisions reflect the full diversity of perspectives that make, the perspectives that make Wilsonville special. In closing, as we look to the future, I'm optimistic about the path ahead. We face both opportunities and a lot of challenges. Managing growth, investing in infrastructure, protecting our environment, navigating financial needs. Together, we continue, we can continue building a Wilsonville that is not only well-run and deeply connected, but also a city that balances innovation with preservation, growth with quality of life, and fiscal prudence with compassion. And taking the oath tonight, I do so with gratitude and sense of purpose. Wilsonville's strength has always come from its people, its volunteers, business owners, educators, parents, neighbors, who care deeply about the city's future. I invite each of you to stay involved, participate, and share your ideas. Together, we'll continue building a city that is not only well-managed, but truly well-loved. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I look forward to the journey ahead and continuing the good work that makes Wilsonville such a special place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Skoll. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution number 3215, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville approving a construction contract with Buell Recreation LLC for the Memorial Park Playground Replacement Project in minutes of the October 20, 2025 city council meeting.
Council President Berry can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Next, turning to new business, I'll ask government relations manager Everett Wild to come forward to discuss the proposed 2026 legislative agenda adoption and the D.C. lobby trip.
Good evening again, councillors. Everett Wild, Government Relations Manager. Thank you for your time and attention during our work session this morning, this morning, earlier this evening. So I won't recap everything that we already discussed, but I am here today with a proposed 2026 legislative agenda for our state lobbying efforts down in Salem for the short session that hopefully reflects Wilsonville's longstanding priorities and policies as well as some recommendations for the moment that are pertinent to legislation that just happened in 2025 and things that we think can get done in this legislative session.
Do you want to summarize a little bit more since the community wasn't, may have not listened in on the work session?
Sure.
To go through everything, but.
So there are two main initiatives that are proposed. The first is a kind of a technical fix to how we can require or currently preempted by the state from being able to require transportation improvements or other improvements, largely called frontage improvements, based on the change of use of a particular building. And then there's a series of rules being developed by state agents. And then there's a series of rules being developed by state agencies right now related to housing that Wilsonville has concerns with, as they limit our ability to adopt our own codes and have some local autonomy. Then a series of legislative priorities, especially around the Boone Bridge and infrastructure financing, and then a couple of other technical adjustments to homelessness management and to how we interact as public bodies related to Oregon government ethics and public meetings law rules.
Thank you. Any questions of council on this particular issue? Do you want us to proceed with the motion now? Okay.
That would be great, and I would be remiss as well. I want to make one edit to the end of the agenda. It was my own error. I accidentally left off mention of Greg Leo, our public affairs consultant. So I want to add his name and contact information to the agenda as well.
Thank you. Council President Berry can have a motion to approve the adoption of the 2026 Legislative Agenda.
I move to adopt the 2026 State Legislative Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made by Council President Berry and seconded by Councillor Chevlin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion, it sounds like everybody said aye. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all. And the second part of my being here tonight is to do a brief recap of our federal lobbying trip. Mayor O'Neill, Assistant City Manager Gina Troha, and myself were in Washington, DC last week, meeting with elected officials and staff on behalf of the City of Wilsonville. We met with Senator Wyden's staff, had a wide-ranging conversation about housing, infrastructure, the Aurora Airport, Boone Bridge. Similar meetings with Senator Merkley and Congresswoman Salinas. Our big ask of all three of them was whether they would support or entertain an earmark request to keep the Boone Bridge progress going. As you all know, we received $1 million from the state legislature last year. We need about $6 million to get to basically 0% design, where an engineer can sit down and start drafting a design. And so there are technical requirements that kind of set the foundation for that design process. So we're $1 million out of six there, and so we went and garnered support or gauged support for the city making an earmark request. And the next time that earmarks process is open, and got good positive support for that, a lot of questions about it, maybe it needs to be scaled, we may not get all the amount, but warm reception to that. We also met with the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee majority staff, again really focused on Boone Bridge, trying to raise the profile of its role in interstate commerce up and down the whole West Coast, from Mexico to Canada, as a choke point and an important infrastructure that needs to be modernized and taken care of. We also tried to meet with USDOT. It was the only one of our meetings that was affected by the ongoing federal shutdown, so they were not able to meet with us based on kind of department guidance. But we left our materials for them and have a commitment from them that they'll meet with us on Zoom or something. So, and then we also met with FAA, talked a lot about the Aurora Airport, learned a lot about kind of FAA headquarters versus the regional versus the Oregon Department of Aviation, and kind of which lanes everyone is in. So some very helpful learning in that meeting. Had a nice dinner with Oregon tech leadership, who just happened to be in DC at the same time. I think overall, it was positive relationship building. I think we were able to kind of step out a little bit from the shadow of J-Pact. We've gone in prior years with J-Pact in the larger cities, kind of take over the issues. So I think we were really able to drive home Wilsonville priorities. Mayor, anything you want to add?
If I had a voice, there's a lot I could add, but I'll just say that I raise broader concerns directly to the leadership from Wilsonville residents, including the local impact of federal funding cuts, rising corporate-controlled residential and commercial rents, and the recent ICE activity that has heightened the fear among immigrant and other marginalized families, and I brought that to their attention. In our meetings with OIT, the discussion was increased enrollment, in the effort to look at Wilsonville's future for workforce and student housing, so we can help generate those Oregon next-generation students, professionals, industries, all within Wilsonville, to kind of look at us as a more blue-ribbon city. And I look forward to those ongoing conversations. It's kind of funny, as I reached out to Everett and they asked, you know, I'd like to set up a meeting, because it's been a while, and we just lucked out that they were in DC at the same time we were, and it worked out wonderful. So thank you for all your work.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, tonight, we will now turn to our public hearing to consider Resolution Number 3218, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Action Plan. The order of procedure for night's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify, and then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting, who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. For those in the audience, please fill out a speaker card and provide to the city recorder. For those on Zoom, if you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise feature, raise hand feature in Zoom, or press star nine on your telephone to notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When you begin your testimony, please state your name and address for the record, or you may state that your address is, as provided to staff. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified, or to staff, to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open at 8:38 PM. I'll ask Natural Resources Program Manager Carrie Rappold to please provide the staff's presentation.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. Yes, my name is Carrie Rappold, Natural Resources Manager. And with me here tonight also is Maurya Brown. She's with Sustainability Solutions Group, and they were the consultant for the project. So we're going to walk you through the plan and give you an idea of where we want to go in terms of, you know, planning for the community. So this just gives you an idea of what we'll be covering tonight, basically the context and the components of the plan. What we learned is really about some of the feedback, certainly that we've received from the community. You'll see that was represented by a number of questionnaires that we did over a period of time. And then we'll get into basically what's the kind of the real heart of the plan are the actions, and they're grouped into five categories. But then what those lead into are the implementation measures. And so there's a set of implementation measures that's within Appendix A. And then how would we go forward in terms of this plan, in terms of integrating it into the work that the city does, what's happening within the community? And then just some idea of the next steps in terms of where this could go, because basically the plan provides a framework for how the city can address climate change, what we can do in terms of climate action, but it doesn't provide all the answers at this point. And so I'll highlight at the end what some of these next steps are. It's certainly at the discretion of the council, you know, what they would like to do as far as moving forward with some of those steps, but we just want to make it apparent to the council and the community what that might take. So this work is predicated on, you know, some steps that the state has taken in terms of an executive order, and the goal with that executive order is basically to reduce, you know, the state's emissions. So they're looking at a 45% reduction below 1990 levels by 2035, and then reducing those emissions by 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. So the city council for fiscal year 2325 had this as a goal, to adopt the Climate Action Plan. So this just gives you a little bit of an idea how the plan is set up, and on the left-hand side is what I just mentioned in terms of the city council goal and then the state's emission targets. And basically, the way the plan is structured is that we looked at a number of different scenarios. Basically, they look at kind of the existing conditions, which is the business as usual, the way that it's identified in the plan. And then there's the business as planned, which really takes into account some of the other things that will be happening, such as at the state level, the cleaning of the grid, that's really dependent on our energy providers. And then ultimately, the last scenario is what's called the low-carbon actions, and those really are very specific in some ways to the City of Wilsonville and to our community and to the way things could go forward in terms of implementing the plan. And then ultimately, like I said, there's this idea of the implementation measures, which are very much more specific in terms of things that we could do. And I'll give you an example here. So one of these, you know, is based on, there's five categories of low-carbon actions, and one of the categories is buildings. And so by 2050, we have this goal within the actions to retrofit all existing buildings in Wilsonville to reduce energy use by 50%. Well, how could we go about doing that? And so on the left or the right-hand side are some examples of implementation measures, such as maybe providing a home retrofit navigator program that would give information to the community in terms of how they might, you know, place solar panels on their homes, and what resources are available, what funding sources. And then on the other side is, you know, what's called the PACE program, which really deals more with our commercial operations within the city and opportunities that are available to them to make use of some resources. So you'll see that reflected in terms of all the actions, whether it's transportation, whether it's buildings, whether it's solid waste. They'll have this, you know, relationship to the implementation measures. So I'm going to hand it over to Maury at this point, and then I'll take some of the slides at the end.
Sure. I trust you can hear me. If not, wave at me, please. This is a slide that we presented to you when we presented you with the draft plan, and we talked a little bit about a couple of the ways in which climate change is expected to impact Wilsonville. I'm going to highlight a different one this time, and that is the number of dry days that Wilsonville will be expecting on an annual basis. So in the past, Wilsonville's experienced approximately 149 days with less than a certain amount of precipitation, which is what the World Meteorological Organization considers to be a dry day. And by 2050, they're expecting this to increase, or I'm sorry, to decrease, no, increase to 159 days annually. So 159 days that will have less than a certain amount of precipitation, and so you could call it a dry day. That may not sound like very much. It's only a 7% reduction, but when you think about it either from a farmer's perspective, that represents 7% more irrigation that they'll probably be relying upon. It also means that overall water demand within the city and within outlying areas can be expected to increase in addition to whatever population growth you're expecting. You're going to have up to 7% simply as a result of this increase in dry days, and that's going to cause you to have greater pressure on drying water use and the energy required in order to process fresh water, make sure that it gets up to drinkable standards. So that's another angle on what climate change will mean for the city. Next slide. We spoke to residents of Wilsonville a number of times and in a number of ways. We looked at several community, or we ran several community surveys, and we also looked at the results of a survey that was run by Clackamas County when they developed their Climate Action Plan in 2023. And the results are important in a couple of ways. In all three years, more than half of the residents who responded indicated that the issue of climate change was very important to them personally. And then there was another significant chunk on top of that that picked the next category of somewhat important. So there's a consistent pattern of majority support for highlighting this as an issue that is important to them, and I would encourage you to keep monitoring this within the community annually if you can, so that you have a sense of the support that is lying within your population and is going to support the work that you do, especially if it comes time to make budget requests and so on. It's always helpful to be able to draw on these types of numbers to know the level of support that you have in the community. Next slide. So this is a quick summary of the modeled results that came out of the project work. We have two images here. The one on the left, which we're showing right now, shows the trajectory of emissions in Wilsonville that we expect if we make no changes to our transportation modes, to the efficiency of our buildings and of our appliances and so on. And in that case, we see a slight increase over time. It's greater than the increase in population and greater than the increase in economic growth that we're expecting. I believe it's 14% overall, and you can see that transportation remains relatively level. The largest area of growth is in commercial energy use and resulting emissions from that. But if we implement the actions in the low-carbon actions in the Climate Action Plan, we see a very different picture. And in this case, we're seeing a reduction of emissions of 41% by 2030, of 72% by 2040, and 83% by 2050. So that's getting very close to aligning with the state's goals. You reach the state's goals by 2050. So that's a very positive path. It's a very ambitious path. There's a lot of work that is going to need to be done in order to make dramatic shifts that touch all angles or all aspects of the community, everything from how your new buildings are constructed to how people get around the city. You'll want to be relying more on active transportation and electric vehicles. So a lot is going to have to change to meet those goals, but a lot of good things come from those changes in addition to the greenhouse gas emission reductions as well. Next slide. So as Carrie mentioned, all of the actions that we modeled for you fall into five broad categories. The first one is buildings and industry, and I'll just talk a little bit about that one. The most important changes that need to happen in buildings and industry is retrofitting your existing building stock, which is a significant operational task. It'll take a lot of coordination to look at the city's complete building stock, look at particularly the oldest buildings, and get them significantly improved in terms of energy efficiency, so that you can reduce the overall energy consumption. That allows you to switch over to electricity for most of the things that we're going to be doing across the community, and add to the electrical draw with things like EVs and so on. You're going to be drawing much more from electricity, but we'll be able to do that because we've made a lot of things much more efficient, and in particular, buildings and industry will need to be made more efficient. So you'll be retrofitting buildings, you'll be improving the energy efficiency standards for new buildings, and you'll also want to be looking at making some parts of the city more compact. of the city more compact. And that is something that you're already looking at in town center. And we modeled those plans and some particular enhancements to those plans that will help you get there. Next slide.
So.
This one's back to you.
Yep. So in terms of responsibility, you know, this, this is a lot, there's a lot of layers to this in terms of how we go forward in terms of climate action planning. And, you know, there's, there's work that's being done at the federal level. Certainly, that impacts what happens at the state level. The state level directly, we're, we're looking at those emission reduction targets in terms of 2035 and 2050. But also things that have taken place because of the executive order as far as changes to the building code, you know, things that affect all the agencies that are involved with, you know, communities here in Oregon. And then when you look at the utilities, something that our modeling clearly shows is that cleaning the grid and having those green energy options is a huge part of getting towards those goals that we have at the state and local level. And in terms of moving forward at our local level, certainly, you know, what we're doing in, in regards to zoning, as the discussion has taken place tonight about Town Center and what that means in terms of this, this plan itself, too, permitting that's associated with that, how do we move this forward in terms of the actual projects, programs the city has, when you look at a program like SMART and what that offers in terms of the alternatives that it's presented already as far as, you know, how they run their fleet. Education and incentives will be critical. That goes back to some of that information we shared about maybe the home navigator program, things that we can provide to the community that will allow them to make better decisions, people to make better decisions about what they want, want to do. But also the leadership, how do we move this forward in terms of, you know, representation within the community and the decisions that are made ultimately, and what that means in terms of engaging the public? So there's a lot of steps to consider. I'll touch upon it at the end, the next steps that, you know, the council has the discretion to look at. Yeah, I'll just hand it over to Maurya.
Sure. The, the last time that we spoke with you, the question was asked, if the state has set these types of goals and they're ambitious goals, are they also providing funding to help us get there? And the answer is yes, they definitely are. So we added this slide to give you more information about the type of funding that is coming from, directly from the state, as well as from the state through other organizations and then from other organizations as well. So if we start with the state, there is some overlap among all of these providers of financial support as well as guidance. But I'm going to highlight some of the things that are unique about each one of these. The state has really focused on providing programs for municipalities, and that takes the form of both guidance and support in planning as well as financial support. So for municipalities and then also for other public types of buildings, and that includes schools and public facilities. There are also many rebate programs for everything from appliances to heating and cooling systems that can be, that come directly from the state. And I'll also mention that the federal incentives that have been removed by Trump's big beautiful bill, a couple of them remain until the end of the year. And that includes the solar incentives, and they're substantial. So if there's anything that can be done quickly before the end of the year, there are significant grants that can still be taken advantage of there, as well as geothermal exchange, heat exchange systems. Those actually extend into the new year and I think for a few years yet. So that's something to bear in mind. Those were excellent rebate programs. Energy Trust has a very broad and diverse set of funding sources, and they touch on some areas that other organizations do not. For example, they support the purchase of more efficient industrial equipment and provide assistance with hydropower development initiatives, and those are both less common things. You won't find those, or I haven't found those in any of the other sources, but they're really important and valuable, especially when we consider that it's the commercial and industrial sector that looks like it will increase the most, the, the emissions will increase the most unless we, we take action. So the support that Energy Trust is providing there should be helpful to that sector. The third one is the Oregon Community Solar Program, which obviously focuses on solar funding. Most of the others also provide some form of solar funding, but the Oregon Community Solar Program provides specific support to developers, building developers, as well as low-income residents and residential subscriptions, all of which are unusual. They aren't the standard programs that you find necessarily with utilities, for example, but they're very important supports to unique parts of society that otherwise sometimes have difficulty accessing funding. And finally, PGE is really strong with electric vehicles. They provide a lot of support for fleet replacement as well as rebates and incentives. So that's a really helpful sector that they're working in. So there is a lot of financial support to get this work done. Carrie.
So, uh, yeah. We'll just finish it up with the, the next steps. And so these steps are identified within the plan, and these are certainly at the direction of the council and in terms of what we might do going forward. Certainly, we're here tonight to, to adopt the Climate Action Plan, but there'll be some important steps in terms of figuring out how do we actually implement this within the community and what governance structure that, that might, you know, entail? Is that a task force or, you know, what, what considerations should we put into that in terms of how it goes forward? Certainly, a financial analysis is usually a very key piece of any climate action plan. So that would be an opportunity to get down into more of the details of those implementation measures and look at, you know, what would it take to, to do this and what would be the cost benefit associated with it? And then looking at this aspect of, you know, having a complete policy and strategy alignment, whether that's the comprehensive plan, our development code and those aspects. And then ultimately, you know, implementation, planning and resourcing and how do we go about monitoring this over time? Because it is a long period of time that we're looking at in terms of implementation at this point, you know, that 2050 goal is 25 years from now. So that provides you with an overview of the plan. We certainly can answer any questions that you might have.
Does any council have any questions to staff at this time? Counselor Cunningham.
So I know that the Governor Kate Brown's Executive Order 20-04 from 2020 is mentioned as kind of a, something that we're looking to try to meet here. As I, as I read through this and did some research on it, it didn't appear to me as if that was an executive order that requires cities to do anything to follow that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that. It's, it's, it's not mandatory. I mean, it provides that guidance in terms of how we can go about, you know, collectively achieving that goal. There are some things within that executive order, like I mentioned with the building code, and some things that, you know, we are responsible for implementing. But really, our plan is the, is the means to, to really achieve, you know, those reduction goals locally.
Also, the, the Clackamas County 2023 Climate Action Plan was, was mentioned here. And I believe it's worth noting that Clackamas County did not adopt that plan. They decided that it wasn't responsible for them to adopt that plan that was created with these same questions and, and by this same consultant.
Yes, it wasn't adopted.
Um, but also, as I was listening to those, the financial support part of this, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of financial support that directly, really directly helps fund the city initiatives, the city actions that are outlined in this plan. It seems like it's a lot more for consumers and things like that. There's not, doesn't seem like there's a lot of money coming from the state that's going to go ahead and, and help get a lot of this done. And as, as I've read through this, it, it sure feels like there's, there's going to be a lot of different things in here that are going to cost money. You know, and I'd remind everyone that, that our budget, as we look forward, our projection shows us operating at a, at a deficit in our general fund for the foreseeable future. Besides fiscal year 2027, where we get a single payment that puts us into the black for one year, operating wise. I, I was hoping to hear more information about financial support that would actually really push some of these things. Retrofitting buildings and things like that is not a cheap endeavor. I, I looked into it as I was going through this and thought, man, what would that cost us to do my house? And, and it was tens of thousands of dollars. And according to this document, it's about a thousand dollars of savings a year. That's, seems like a pretty poor return on investment to me. It's also, you know, step three is that we're getting to the financials of it. I, I don't know that we have, you know, given, given our budget that that's something we, we can really look at. So I guess it's not really any other questions there, but.
Would you like a risk, a little bit more information about our experience with the financials or shall I?
Sure, please.
Yeah, I can say, first of all, that the state programs do support a lot of the same changes that would be made in the community. So if you're replacing heating and cooling systems in a commercial property, you, the same financing sources can also be used to help cities make similar changes in public buildings. So those sources do apply to the cities as well in many cases. The second thing I would say is that we have done a lot of work with municipalities to integrate making these kinds of changes into your regular operational maintenance programs so that the next time that a facility comes up for some major maintenance work to replace air filters or heating systems and so on, at that point, if you switch out old ones for zero emission systems, the benefit is realized quite quickly. And you will see that the, the incremental cost between the maintenance you're doing on your buildings and making these changes to net zero technologies, if done through the natural course of the maintenance cycle, is very doable. It's much smaller than you would think. The maintenance costs, as projected, make up the majority of the cost, and this is a small piece on top. And the savings in operational costs, in energy costs specifically, are substantial. So the financial analysis was listed third on that slide, but it could be done first. And I think you'd find that it would have a, a significant operational benefit for you financially. That's what we see pretty consistently with our clients.
Thank you for the, the response. You know, I can appreciate that. I believe that a lot of these things, they're common sense things to do when they, when they, when they're there in front of us, when, when there's a rebate system and, and there's an opportunity, sure. I'm not sure that adopting this plan, though, that has some things in it, like building more multi-unit mixed-use developments, and we've heard, anybody who watched the Town Center focus groups heard a lot about not wanting to see density in town, not wanting to see five-story buildings in town. We missed the mark, got a no vote from our community last May on, on that, funding for that plan. And it was discouraging for me to see that one of these action plans, that one of these action points in here is to build more multi-unit and mixed-use development and really just lean into that, which, which we're hearing from our community now, that that is not what people want to see. So I, I mean, I guess I'll save.
We responded, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I guess I'll save, you know, some of this discussion for, for, I guess, when we, when we go to the vote on this. But, I mean, I have, I have a lot of concerns about this, that it really doesn't support what our community is looking for from us as elected leaders to, to develop this community and make it into what they would like to see out of it. And if you had something, please feel free.
I was simply going to, oh, I'm sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just going to mention that certainly the plan makes use of, you know, existing plans that are in place, and that the Town Center Plan has been adopted at this point. So we had to work from the information that currently exists and to do our projections and to look at, you know, the, the actions or implementation measures that would be included.
And I guess that's, that's maybe my biggest concern with this, kind of the, the point that you just brought up there. You just said that the Town Center Plan's been adopted, so that now we're supposed to follow that. Well, if this plan is adopted and then we decide that we need to change course, it sounds, it sounds like right now we're being told by our community that we need to change course on Town Center. That's what I'm hearing. That's what I saw in the focus groups. And if we adopt this plan, are we going to stick rigidly to it and, and hear that same, well, we've adopted the plan, we have to go through with it now? I just, I don't think that it's responsible, and I, and I think that Clackamas County back in 2023, they did the smart thing by shelving this thing and taking it under consideration and moving on.
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. This is a time to ask questions of staff, and we'll have further opportunity to have our opinions taken when we make the motion. Counselor Skoll.
Well, I have a certain advantage to this because we've talked about this, I think it's my fourth round with both you and Mara.
Right.
And so I'll go back to one of my, one of several questions that I've had, and I keep repeating this, and I think Mara explained it pretty well, and you did, too. What's the cost of doing nothing? You know, what, what, where's the impact? I think the community needs to know and understand if we just sit on our hands and do nothing and just let it ride, what, what are those, what are those things that are going, what's going to, what's it going to cost the community? And where's, where the, you know, where are the impacts?
Yeah, do you want to start with that, Maurya, first? Go ahead.
Sure, yeah. There are many ways that that can be quantified, and there's a lot of work that has gone into quantifying where those costs will be experienced by communities. It extends from, everything from the example of increased irrigation and increased water treatment required as the temperature, as the conditions dry out, to the fact that there will be larger draws on the electricity grid, even through things that have nothing to do with climate change, but the, the increase in the number of data centers that are, are popping up across the country. That increases the draw on the electricity grid tremendously. And if you don't have the kind of resilience in your building stock to ensure that they are really energy efficient, and if you don't have local solar power in as many places as you can put it, you are going to experience more blackouts and you're going to have more difficulty keeping a reliable power system. And there are also things like health impacts and extreme weather events. And many of those types of things, the costs of dealing with that fall disproportionately to municipalities. So when you have a really heavy storm and water drainage infrastructure is overwhelmed, that's a cost that falls first to the municipality. And there's going to be increasing cost pressures on municipalities as climate change increases. And at that point, I think the benefits will become, the benefits of having anticipated these changes, many types of changes, not just climate change, but the other types of growth like data centers that are happening. Anticipating this is, is part of the wisdom of city leadership, where, where city leadership can really help to support a community before they necessarily have all of the information that, that we're able to provide you through a project like this that helps you see those things coming. And I guess I would say that's, that's the, the cost of doing nothing is one of those things that we can kind of share with you to help you see that there's a benefit to taking some of these costs now. Is that, is that the right answer?
Thank you.
A full answer?
Thank you.
Any other council questions, staff? Okay. Do we have any testimony? Okay. Brad Williams? And I should have said this, so Brad, just hold on, I won't lose your, oh, you stay, come on up, come on, sorry, I should have read this, I'm tired. For public testimony, we'll start with people who signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. Staff, if people have signed up in advance, who is in, okay, we've done that. And go ahead, Brad.
Hi, my name is Brad Williams. I have lived and/or worked in Wilsonville since 1998. I moved back here in 2018, and I bought a home that was built in 1990. I moved back here in 2018 and I bought a home that was built in 1990. And pretty much nothing had been done, no upgrades had been done on it when we moved in. So we replaced the water heater with gas because that's better. We replaced the furnace with gas because it's better. All the windows, we've pretty much done everything we can possibly do to make the house more energy efficient and it did not come with a small price tag. So this really concerns me because I don't think that I can get to 50%. I can't have solar because I live in a neighborhood, in fact, my antihiv neighborhood was built in 1990. I have big fir trees that are, that face south, so solar is not an option for me. So I'm not going to be able to get to 50%. And I'm not giving up my gas water heater and my gas furnace. You know, unless you want to basically pry it from my cold dead hand. They brought up about the data centers and if you, if you're following what's going on with the data centers, especially with AI, that is going to be a major concern. Forget about climate change. We need to start building power plants now, fast, because we're going to be overrun with the power consumption from all of these, these data centers for AI. We're going to have to figure that out quick. This is, the climate change is nothing. We're going to be, we're going to not have enough electricity just to turn the lights on if we don't do something quickly about it. And that has nothing to do with this body, but I'm just bringing that up. So what happens if I refuse to participate in this, like I can't do anything more with my house? Am I going to be fined? Is we're going to somehow regulate the amount of electricity that I consume? Because I get really concerned about that. I actually got rid of my Nest thermostat because while I was gone on vacation, the Nest decided to turn my thermostat down to 45 degrees and pipes froze and burst as soon as I got back home and turned on the furnace. So the other thing, and it sounds like, you know, to me, unless we get this Boone Bridge issue fixed so that if this town center loop, town center plan goes through, there's going to be more congestion, which is going to cause more people idling in their cars, which is going to cause more carbon emissions. So to me, before we talk about any of this stuff, the Boone Bridge needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any, does any councilor need anything clarified after hearing from that speaker? Okay. Next speaker is Jeff Zundel.
Hey, my name is Jeff Zundel. My address is on record. I missed our planning commission meeting where this was presented a week ago or a couple of weeks ago, which was regretful, but I did have an opportunity to watch the presentation then, read through the hundred pages or so of the actual report or the plan, and was blown away by how thorough and impressive it is. I think that while it won't be easy to achieve, I appreciate the questions about the economic feasibility and how challenging it will be. I also appreciate the question about what happens if we do nothing? I think the consequences and the cost to us will be so, so much greater if we don't do anything. And we can do so much more if we act as a community rather than as piecemeal actions as individual residents of the community. So I think we have an opportunity to think about what we can do and frame it in terms of what we can do too. So let's not be irresponsible here. Let's not be, let's not be trying to bite off more than we can chew. Let's not make commitments that we can't, we can't pursue reasonably. But let's be grounded. Let's talk about what is, what we're really facing, what the environment is that we're actually operating in and then be hopeful and really pursue things together as a community. I would like to say too, as I read through the, through the plan, there was one thing that stood out to me in particular that, that I wanted to ask a question about and to get more information about whether here or in the future. I, I serve on the boards of two different HOAs in Villabon. And in both of those HOAs, we face rising costs related to irrigation. Our landscaping is by far the greatest line item in our budgets each year. And I see that getting worse and worse, not just because the rates for water go up. That's something that will happen, but because we have to put more water onto our grass and we have to do more to keep that grass healthy and the flower beds healthy. When I looked through the appendix for the Climate Action Plan, where I was searching for the words HOA, because one of the things you mentioned in that the plan was working with communities, working with HOAs. But when I searched through the appendix, all I was seeing were in the public testimony mentioning HOAs was, was basically having the city do something to make it so the HOAs don't have to have grass. I don't have a strong position on that, but I'm curious if there were other things that the Climate Action Plan kind of anticipates, working with the HOAs or the other kind of neighborhood groups or other kind of community leaders, if you can articulate on that a little bit more, or if that's still kind of a TBD that would be determined later in this plan's timeline? Thank you.
And for my purposes, I'd like to have an answer to that question.
So yeah, I think we would envision, you know, it's really important to certainly work with the HOAs as far as not only irrigation, but other issues that come into play as far as information that they might need to share with their homeowners. Specifically in regards to irrigation, I would say that, you know, there's opportunities for creating ziriscaping, drought tolerant landscapes that require a lot less irrigation. Just recently, we had a discussion with the Grand Points subdivision and, you know, we've worked with them to hopefully find some things that they could reduce in terms of their, their water usage and that could be a cost savings for them to go forward. And so I think it's, it's a, it's a kind of a general issue in terms of like, I think staff, you know, could spend more time working with HOAs in the community and having, you know, the opportunity to engage and to have them, you know, receive information and resources that can support them.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions that the prior testimony triggered? Anybody else on Zoom or in the audience? Is there anybody in the audience that hasn't signed up to speak, that wishes to speak? Okay. Oh, we do.
There's a lot less people here, so I'll be a little bit more thoughtful. I'd say my name is Andrew Engel and my address is on the speaker card from earlier, but I live in the Hawthwaite Court Apartments. Brittany's my neighbor. She's awesome. As an apartment resident, I would like to comment that businesses definitely have a role to play. And I think doing what you can to solicit business engagement in climate action is important. The apartment that I live in, it was built in the 90s and it has had double pane windows for as far as, you know, I've ever known. But the switch away from resistive cadet heaters would be amazing. And I would be curious to know what additional opportunities can be explored with public-private partnerships and helping businesses make that transition to efficient residential and commercial heating and cooling as the, you know, not just the city buildings are old stock and could be retrofitted. The other comment that I would, you know, like to have our city advocating for us on is that data centers and AI are a exploding use of energy. And we are all seeing our rates go up to accommodate that increased demand at the same time that our cities and states are cutting tax breaks for data centers and AI usage. And I, as a, you know, resident and utility user, find that kind of frustrating. So I would encourage climate action to be, what can we do as a city? But also making sure that as, as a city and an advocate, that we don't just put in a lot of work only to see our corporate culture kind of undo all of that work. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weyler, do you have some testimony you want to offer?
Yes. Generally, I'm not in favor of adopting anything we don't have to. That's number one. Number two, we can work toward things as a goal without putting them in, adopting them. Because once this city adopts things, it's very difficult to change. But my next is a piece of advice, and that is you should all invest in small nuclear reactors. They're the size of garbage cans and they're already being used in Europe and were developed here in Corvallis, Oregon.
Thank you. Okay, I see we have someone else. We're going to have to get your name. Come on up. You're going to have to fill out a form after you speak, but come on up.
I'm just thinking this because this is something that really bothers me and something that really affects the air quality and that is gas-powered leaf blowers. There's a lot of places in California that are outlawing them and I think we should think about it too. It could be part of the plan to reduce emissions and it would be a lot quieter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to offer testimony? The staff have anything further to add for the record at this point?
No, just as I alluded to earlier, that, you know, there's, there's a number of steps that would be necessary to move it forward and certainly the council has discretion to decide how they want to do that. Certainly, looking at those financial aspects and the analysis with that would be, you know, a very important step.
I think another important point is to point out that anything that this council or any future council does from a fiscal standpoint would have to go through the annual budget process. So if there's any concerns about major expenditures for things related to this plan, it would all have to be thrown in the mix with all the other priorities that the city council and future councils have. So I think the fiscal analysis would give you kind of that low hanging fruit, return on investment. We obviously do that for every building we retrofit or any new building. Our new Public Works facility is very energy efficient, so we're always doing those things anyway. But in terms of like big expenditures, those are all things that would have to be run through the city council and the budget committee into the future.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city council if there's any questions of council. Councilor Chevlin?
Is it okay if I make a comment rather than a question? Okay, well, just in regards to what our city manager just said, I believe that we should, if this passes, then if we adopt it, then I believe the financial analysis needs to be done upfront. It's already been said, but I believe that gives us an idea of what things we can do immediately and what things may be long-range goals that we may not be able to accomplish or could be very far out. Thank you.
Any others on council have any questions of staff or anybody? Okay, hearing no further questions and everyone having testified, I hereby declare the public hearing closed at 9:23 PM. It's now time for council to consider resolution number 3218, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Action Plan. This is a time that we can deliberate. Any discussion, general discussion, you'll have additional time to discuss after any motion is presented. Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion on resolution number 3218, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Action Plan?
I move to adopt resolution number 3218, Climate Action Plan.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion to approve or adopt resolution number 3218, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Action Plan has been made by Council President Berry and seconded by Councilor Skoll. Do we have any discussion? Okay, Councilor Chevlin?
Thank you. What I like about this plan is that it is common sense, which has been mentioned by some of our, our testimony that we heard. What I like is that it incentivizes people to make choices that whether they can afford or not afford to do. So no one's going to arrest somebody's gas water heater out of their garage or wherever it resides and fine them for not being able to use alternatives. Gas water heaters may become more expensive, so when your water heater breaks down, you might look at another option. I appreciate the comment that was made about gas leaf blowers. I believe 2026 is when Portland is going to start instituting their no gas-powered lawn equipment. What's beautiful about that plan is that it incentivizes people, particularly people that are, their employment is large lawn maintenance. So the new equipment is, is being made available to them through grants and very, very low price to be able to, to replace their entire fleet of, of equipment. So that they, because otherwise it would be overwhelming to replace everything. So, so there are opportunities for citizens and for businesses to be able to look at the incentives and then how can they begin to make a contribution? That's the beauty of what I believe our plan is, is that people can do what they can, either locally or commercially at gas power. No one's going to take a combustion engine vehicle away from someone. But maybe we incentivize people by making sure that there are plenty of electric vehicle charging stations that are close in to shopping. And that if you're going to drive a gas-powered vehicle, maybe you have to park and maybe walk a little bit further, which might be good for your health anyway. So I appreciate this plan and I think it's a good plan. We start out with looking at if it's, if we approve, if we adopt it, we look at the finances and then see what can we do first and then make a long-range plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cunningham?
So you mentioned tax credits and grants and government rebates and things like that. I think we have to keep in mind that it's nice to get those things, but where does that come from? Comes from all of you. Comes from your tax money. Tax money doesn't grow on trees. The federal government just doesn't get it out of thin air. It's still our money somewhere. You know, some of the, I wrote down some quotes from, from the presentation. It says, change the way you build buildings. And then there's, there's some positives to that. Building with smarter materials, building in ways that are common sense are great. But when we have an entire action point in here, again, that goes against what we are hearing in these focus groups. Honestly, I think we should hold off on this thing until after the focus group report comes out and after we hear back from our citizens in a, in a clear report about what they're expecting of us in our next big development here in town. Because I think that dictates a lot of what they expect of us and what they'd like to see in this plan as well. But when this action calls for building more multi-unit and mixed-use developments, did anybody take note of what, how many, how many total emissions eliminated that would constitute? Point four percent. We're going to change the fabric of our community. We're going to change the character of Wilsonville so we can reduce our emissions by point four percent as part of this plan. That's not a Wilsonville solution.
We could probably, we could probably give you a better picture of that based on what we provided to the planning commission. I think we actually quantified the difference for town centers specifically. So we could, we could help you with that number if you're interested.
The other question that was brought up was the cost of doing nothing. If we look at page 45, 218 of the packet, it shows a very significant amount of reduction just by the implementation of the clean grid. This is things that are out of our control. This is PGE going out, building the cleaner grid, doing those improvements. A lot of this plan really kind of relies on that in a lot of ways. There's, there's a couple of different models, but when that goes away, suddenly, suddenly the things that we're supposed to do get a lot bigger. I don't see this plan as being useful or feasible for our city, especially given the budget concerns that I've brought up. And I know that it has to go through the budget process and all of that. We're operating in a budget deficit for out of the five next years. Only reason, only reason we're not in deficit one year is because we get a one-time last payment for that water pipe running through, running up 95th that has ruined traffic for, for our whole community. It's the only reason that we're not, we're not going to be in the red in five years. We don't have the money to go and throw it around at niceties right now. We need to get down to foundational needs. We need to get down to foundational needs, we need to get back to brass tacks, we need to get priorities in order to ensure the longevity of our city, and that we don't sell our city to some idea of five-story buildings and creating something that is clearly not Wilsonville and clearly not what people are looking for. There's, there's a ton of red tape that goes into adding further requirements for, for buildings and building codes. This, this clearly is talking about shifting transportation modes, which to a lot of people says taking them out of their cars. People don't want to give up their cars. Some of this stuff in here, like the transportation section on switching city fleet to zero emission vehicles, that's required anyways, based on state mandates. I think a lot of these things that we, that are in here, we would do just as a course of natural business, as we make improvements on buildings, as we find, as, as hopefully we get our budget set and get right with that again. But, I mean, I don't even want to know how much we've spent on the consultants on this already, and how much we would spend to continue down through those further steps. For something that, like I said, Clackamas County, they, they went through the whole process, and they said, "Yeah, thanks, but no thanks." And I think that, you know, for, for an organization that is rated as a, what is it, a AAA-rated financial entity, there's something to be learned from, from how to approach something like this.
Thank you. Counselor Skoll?
So I've had, again, as I mentioned, I've had a chance to go through this three or four times, I've seen the presentation, and I'm really focused on the cost of inaction. You know, we can, and I, I sort, I think I sorted this out, but, you know, choosing inaction, you know, we're, we're trying to save short-term dollars that basically will undermine the fiscal prudence and the community well-being over time. This plan, this is a plan, and it basically has a horizon of, you know, 20, 30 years, and basically, it's a start. And in my opinion, I think it's the least that we can do to get started in the process. I actually wrote a little bit up on this, and I was going to present it tonight from over there, and I happen to be sitting over here, but this plan presents a thoughtful, forward-looking framework to secure a long-term environmental, economic, and social stability, the social stability, or sustainability, I'm sorry, of our community. It's grounded in the core values of responsible growth and fiscal store, of stewardship and the quality of life. It outlines a data-driven path to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, boost energy efficiency, and strengthen the community resilience. I feel strongly that this is something that we should start, and basically, as we go down the path, there'll be budget committees, there'll be other councils, you know, basically that will create the outlines and the details of implementing the plan, and then basically enforcing the plan as we move forward. So I say that it's, in my opinion, it's a good thing, a good place to start, and I think we should do it. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, Counselor Cunningham?
I'll reiterate a point that I made, I don't know, two or four weeks ago, that to the point of the cost of doing nothing, we could do everything here in Wilsonville, we could become net zero tomorrow, and we could still have all of these problems the day after, and we can bankrupt our whole city on it, and we can spend a lot of money on it, and the world is going to do what the world does. I know that a speaker came a couple of weeks ago and talked about China is cleaning up their grid, but there's still 30% of the world's carbon emissions. They've had a, a trajectory for, they've, they've always been on an upward trajectory, and maybe they're cleaning it up, but do you think that they're going to take a backseat on creating data centers and AI? Because there's money in that, there's a lot of money in that. And they're going to continue to do whatever it takes to create the energy needed to build those AI centers. And, you know, we're looking at this tonight, too, with the backdrop of just talking about tripling our community's utility rates on sewer and stormwater. I'm guessing that in the next meeting or two, we're going to have someone come and ask us to consider implementing a mandatory parks fee onto every utility bill in our city to keep our parks running. We're considering doing this and taking something that isn't necessary, and with the backdrop of all of these other increases that are occurring, the cost of living for people in our community has skyrocketed, people are struggling right now. I mean, just look at, you know, the federal government shuts down and food stamps turn off, and how many people are in dire straits all of a sudden? There's not, there's, there's a lot of people struggling right now, and I just don't see this as being prudent to the issues that we're facing right now, and I think that it's counter in a lot of ways to what people expect us to do as, as our elected leaders.
Thank you. I'm going to weigh in now at the end. I appreciate all the work that you've done. I think I worry that years from now, the committee will look back if we didn't have a plan, and ask us, "Why didn't we?" I acknowledge what Counselor Cunningham has said, that in fact, we have a lot of people struggling, and will be struggling. I don't believe this particular plan's responsible for all those issues, and I think it's in the best interest of our city. And I know there's a lot of residents that I hear that are in support of this. So I think it's a good idea, I appreciate the efforts of staff and our, and I also agree with Counselor Shevlin, it's critical to always have a financial assessment of these things moving forward. And I, City Manager Cosgrove cleared, spelled it out clearly, that as a council, each year we'll be addressing these things from a budget perspective, and what is feasible and what is not. So with that, I appreciate your presentation, and with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 3218, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Action Plan, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. With that, any city manager business?
Welcome, Counselor Skoll. That's all.
He's pretty brief with those welcomes. Illegal business?
Nothing tonight here.
All right. With that, we're going to adjourn at 9:38 PM.